Okay, sorry for the holdup folks, we were playing music in chairs. Good evening and welcome to the November 5th, 2025 meeting of the Wilmington School Committee. Please join us for the pledge allegiance.
It's done.
Oh, there it is.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just wanted to start to know where it's gonna be then. All right. First item on our agenda this evening is the Wilmington High School Student Representative Report. Joining us this evening, we have Kaya Dawn and Olivia Howie. Good evening and welcome. Thank you for being here.
Hi, I'm Kaya. I'm a sophomore at Wilmington High School. I do drama and soundscape and I'm a part of Asian Heritage.
Hi, I'm Olivia. I'm a freshman at Wilmington High School. This is my first year on the Student Advisory Committee and I play soccer. I'm part of Soundscape and the Lian Flyer Storm Club.
Congratulations to the cast and crew of Frankenstein for performing three shows on Halloween weekend. The Thursday and Friday shows were both sold out and the Saturday show also showed success.
On October 25th, homecoming was hosted in the gymnasium. Shout out to staff and coaches who helped chaperone and WHS PAC who provided a photo booth.
Congratulations to the varsity girls soccer team and the cheer team who are 2025 Middlesex League Champions along with the WHS golf team who won the sectional championship for the first time in 22 years.
Next off, thank you to the strides and service learning participants for arranging the Socktober Sock Donation Drive this past October. They donated over 100 pairs of socks to Cradles to Crayons.
Have an eye out for upcoming events such as Drop and Chess hosted by Wilmington High School Chess Club. It'll be held in the Wilmington Memorial Library on November 5th from 3:00 to 4:00 PM. No experience in chess is needed.
The high school also hosted its 8th grade visit on October 21st. The middle school students were able to tour the high school and discover the different departments, classes, and extracurricular activities that high school has to offer.
Registration for the Oceans to Orbit Florida trip is now open. Students will take a five-day trip for the first week of April and will focus on STEM Fields. Students will visit the Daytona International Speedway, the Kennedy Space Center, and Eckerd College. If students or parents have any questions, they should reach out to Ms. Kim, Ms. King, or Ms. Dally.
The Germany, Austria, Czechoslovakia, Hungary trips registrations were also opened up to the 10th graders and the advisors, Ms. Andrade and Ms. McDermott, held their enrollment meeting on October 15th. In June of 2026, students will visit all four countries over the course of a week, stopping in Munich, Vienna, and Budapest.
We can also look forward to a presentation and discussion on tech, social media, and our students. It will be held in Wilmington High School Library from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM on November 18th. If anyone is interested to learn about social media affects our students' mental health, internet safety, and parental strategies for the use of technology.
Ending on November 7th, the Wilmington Town Manager's Office and Select Board are holding a food drive for the Wilmington Food Pantry. Many members of our community deal with food shortages around this time of year and the food drive will be a way for Wilmington to help those in need. Non-perishable food items and any other necessities will be collected either at the town hall or as a more convenient option, the drop-in boxes at Market Basket and McKinnon's.
Another drive to keep in mind is the Holiday Toy Collection. With the holiday season coming up, WHS is partnering with the Wilmington Fire Department in a Holiday Toy Collection Drive. The drive will last from November 17th to December 5th. Donation bins will be held in the main office or in the lobby of WHS.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you so much.
Questions, comments from the committee?
One quick one. One of the things that was fantastic about Frankenstein was it happened in this very room. When this building was built in 2015, this was built as a black box theater and had never been used before in that purpose and it was fantastic. Very, very intense, sitting in the front row, the actors and actresses came within a few feet of you. It was an amazing way to see a theater performance in a very different environment than the auditorium where a lot of the other plays and musicals have happened. So it was great and I hope the theater department's able to use this space again in that way. It was a very cool experience.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Golden. Thank you, and thank you for being here. You said you're both part of Soundscape. Are you guys working on a particular piece that you're really excited about?
We are working towards a competition. It'll be held in very late January. It's called the ISCHA. It's held in Wakefield and there are several other a cappella groups and we compete and...
Good luck. Excited?
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Dr. Bryson?
Just one quick addition. Football's in the playoffs too and they are home, 7 o'clock this coming Friday night, so be there.
I know they gave you the spiel already. Thank you very much. You don't have to feel like you can stay, you should stay, but you can if you want to. Everybody told you that it's gonna be super boring and you should go home, but you're welcome to join us. Thank you for the report.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. All right, that brings us to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes, October 8th, 2025. Is there a motion? Mr. Golden, second. Mr. Ragsill, all those in favor? That is unanimous. We have grants 15 through 17, revolving 20 through 26, local 26 through 37, food service 18 through 22, circuit breaker 5 and 6, special education 15 through 23, and payroll for dates ending 10/22/2025 and 11/5/2025. Is there a motion? Dr. Bryson, second. Mr. Turner, all those in favor? Unanimous. All right. That concludes the consent agenda and rolls us right into superintendent's report. Dr. Thompson?
Yes, thank you very much. So we'll start with the SIMS, with the enrollment report, which you can see, and I'm not gonna go through it line by line, but at the bottom, you can see this year, and these are our October 1 numbers, 2,843 students. That is an increase of 25 students from the previous year. So you will see that. I will point out that the high school is also up, 15 students. We're up at 640. Last year we were 625. So that is good news. Moving on to the Wildwood Elementary School Project Update. Question? Sorry.
Yeah, I had a question on that. Should I wait till...
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks for that. So just had two questions on the enrollment. So one may not have the official numbers yet, but was curious if you can state what our retention looked like from going to 8th grade to the high school, like what that percentage was?
So yeah, from 8 to 9 was 73.5%. So in FY '25, there are 200 8th graders and in FY '26, there's 147 9th graders. So that is an increase. Yep.
And just to that point, that's the highest number in six years, seven years, and other than one year is the highest number in nearly a decade. So it's a really strong number and I think reflective of the quality work happening at high school.
And then just another question. You know, we usually ask this, but more curious is, you know, Wilmington has two great public schools, Shawshank Tech, a lot of students really appropriate to go there, and we also have Wilmington Public High School. Was wondering if we have any idea on the kids that are not attending either one of those? Like how many kids are doing, are going somewhere else and where are they going and any reasons why?
Yeah, I can do that. Yeah, there was, I think there were three students that went to private schools. I believe a couple were athletic related and one I think was, went to a parochial school, so.
Okay.
Out of the group that didn't, that were 8th grade, didn't come to the high school and the rest of them were essentially Shawshank Tech.
Okay, great.
In the numbers, I mean, as we know, we've typically had around a core 25% of our students from 8th grade don't go to the 9th grade. Traditionally, it's in that wild box, so.
Definitely.
Mr. Turner?
Then the one other point that we've consistently seen and is reflected again this year is the retention rates for 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade are all above 100%. So we are continually seeing kids coming back into the high school or coming to the high school for the first time in those grades. And so it's always a strong sign of the high school that consistently, year over year, those numbers are over 100%, which reflect pretty well on kids that try things in freshman year and realize they wanna come here instead.
Yep. Dr. Bryson?
Yeah, so and I agree, I also think it's a sort of a tribute to the schools that come before the high school and sort of the work we're doing across the district, right? So if they're happy in the middle school and they're happy in the intermediate, like I think it kind of, we see that also as evidence that the high school is the place they wanna be and the high school's doing a great job. So I just wanted to add that.
Which is maybe foreshadowing the elementary school improvement plans.
I know. It's perfect.
Just saying. Sorry, Dr. Thompson, enemy to steal your thunder.
There's plenty of thunder to share, so we're good.
And then just one comment I had. I didn't notice that 8th grade class, so I have a personal connection to that class. Appears to be the largest class in the district will be coming into the high school next year, so that'll be quite a significant increase in what the high school's seen in a few years if we still have that 70 to 80% retention rate.
Yep. So 269 students in 8th grade.
It's a bubble.
Yep. All right. Okay. Okay, so school building project, just to make sure everybody has it on their calendar. The next meeting of the School Building Committee is on the 18th of November at 6:30 right here in this building and as I've mentioned before, we are in schematic design. You will see a press release that did go out the 1st of November, so that is included in your packet. What we are, what, you know, is happening now is part of moving on to that final design phase is checking the original work that was done on the site, getting more detailed information, water, rock, drainage, all of that sort of stuff, as well as, and currently we're in the process of meeting with staff and our administrators and going through the design and having questions and answers about that and about what is actually needed for the programs. So from all of that information, from the consultants that come in to do the testing, from those meetings with our staff, the architect, Doran Woodyer, will produce eventually, there's a lot more research and work to do, but sometime between now and April, will put together kind of the final plans and then from that will come the construction documents. So that's kind of an update on the middle school project. I don't know if anyone else wants to, has any questions or wants to add anything to that who's on the committee?
I think you covered it nicely.
Okay, thank you. Of course, now my thing's not gonna work here for the next one. This is what happens if you try to get all the, yeah, okay, thank you. And then I think we're moving on to the end of year report?
Yep, end of year report.
Thank you. So in your package was a copy of the FY '24 end of year report, as I mentioned in previous school committee meetings, that by the end of September, we have to report to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, essentially every penny that comes into and goes out of the district. So that report shows everything that, all revenues and expenditures for the district for that fiscal year. That's informational for the school committee to see that, so. I will say Kerry did all the yeoman's work on the report this year and so you're in good hands going forward.
Anybody have questions on the report before we move forward? Dr. McColdy?
Yep, I do. Two questions. So thanks for putting this together. It looks like it's a beast, so a lot of work. Thanks Kerry for doing that. So first question I have, and it's more question I just want to make the committee and everyone else aware of, you know, WPS does receive significant federal funding grants and I was wondering if you can comment if we may expect to continue receiving these grants? I know there have been cuts to the federal education budget and everything like that. And then if we do get cuts, will these programs still be funded?
Yeah, I mean, some of the federal grants that, essentially the ones I'll talk about are the entitlement grants that we've gotten them every, you know, every year since I've been here and we seem to be, hopefully we continue to, I mean, every district in the Commonwealth and probably in the country receive some of these federal grants. They might fluctuate year to year on the total value of them, but we've been getting them. There was a little delay this year, but we ended up getting the grants. If we didn't get some of those grants, a lot of the spending that we do or charge to the grants would probably have to come back to the local budget. Anything that is, for the most part, the, most of it would, I mean, two of them are special ed related, one's early childhood, one's IDEA, federal laws, so you'd have to, you know, hear to them and do what we need to do. So a lot of those costs would come to the local budget. There's a lot of asset grants too, which is Title I, Title II A, and so forth, and the most of those are geared toward different populations of students. So for the district, I think we'd probably have to bring some of that money back to the, to the local budget as well, if we didn't have those entitlement grants.
Okay. Yeah, thanks for that explanation. So something we'll have to keep an eye on if there are cuts to those or anything like that.
Yeah, there are some other state grants that we get and a lot of them are competitive grants, so we, grant writers will write a grant for some funds and we either get them or don't get them. And we've had a couple this year that we didn't get, although you can't say definitively why, but a lot of them are tied to the MBTA Communities Act that the town didn't pass. Desi doesn't say why you didn't get it, but you can just, you get. But there was a couple that we didn't get, but there was a couple, a few other competitive grants that we did get, did receive, so.
Sure. And then one other question. You know, the reason why I ask this question is, you know, Paul Sessely, you've been doing this for a long time, you know, you've done such a great job with the budget. I was wondering if you can comment on our incoming revenues match up to the listed expenditures?
Yes, so we, as a school district, can only expend up to our budgeted funds. We can't overexpend those, so we can sit to the budgets really, we'll call it revenue, if you will. We also have revenue sources from our revolving accounts. There's Circuit Breaker, which is a special education reimbursement program will receive funds. And, you know, in our revolving accounts, we can only spend, we can only have expenditures that are a direct result of the revenue that we brought in and we have to make sure that those revolving accounts are always in the black. There's other revenues that are shown in the end of the year report. For instance, just one quick example, we do a Medicaid reimbursement that the school system puts information together for Medicaid-related expenditures and the town gets reimbursed from the state for that. So that's revenue that comes in. There's also, the town allocates costs to the school system. They've done this, you know, ever since I've been here and probably well before. For instance, health insurance is covered by the town. It's in the town's budget. For end of year report purposes, they allocate a portion of those costs that are associated for the schools. So we include that in the end of the year reports. That's not our budget, but it's reported in the end of the year report. And there's a few other things that Shawshank Tech Assessment Fee is allocated to the schools as part of the end of the year report. Some of these things, the way we have to report things based on the Desi Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, so. Key for us, local budget, don't overspend it.
Yeah. You think you undersell yourself because, you know, you read all the stories about districts having to, also have budget shortfalls and all that. So I just want to say thank you for all your years and helping us out and, you know, welcome Kerry to the show now, so.
Mr. Ragsill?
Paul, it looks to me like the spend that the federal, at least the entitlement allocation grants are almost identical from last year. I think I saw it looked like $150 difference to me. Does that sound right?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. And so we have like a, just over a million dollars of federal entitlement and allocation grants and the big bulk of that is IDEA funding, Individuals with Disabilities and Education Act funding. So that's over $800,000 of it and then the rest is just a little like Title I, Title II, Title IV.
Yeah, early childhood, yeah.
Okay, last but not least?
Revolving account.
Revolving account.
Okay, so in your package, there is just a revolving account report. Again, these are all revolving accounts we have. It shows the beginning balance, expenditures, a revenue for FY '25 expenditures in an ending balance. As you can see, all the revolving accounts are in the black and they have to be in the black, so. So we're in good shape there and we just, you know, monitor these throughout the years. This is the FY '25 ending balances in our revolving accounts. You will see there's a few couple that have some good hefty balances, food service being one, that's, you know, free and reduced lunch with the federal and state government paying us for the meals and doing breakfast, lunch, and some snacks and stuff, so that's got a pretty hefty balance. And then Kias has a hefty balance. It went down a little bit, but we haven't, the program's just so popular. We haven't raised tuitions. You know, I think in FY '25, we raised tuitions and I think in '21, we did, and then we had to play with it a little bit when we changed the school start times and so forth, but it's not a tuition cost, cause of the balance going up, it's just how popular it is and how many families use it and it's a great program for the community.
Great. Thank you. Questions from the committee on the revolving accounts? Hearing none.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
You.
I think that, I'll steal your thunder again, I think that concludes the superintendent's report. All right. All right. Real quick, before we move to public comment, I know previously we had introduced Kerry to the committee and to the community and at the time, he wisely or not chose to sit in the back off camera. This evening is his first time joining us at the table, so again, welcome, congratulations. Thank you. We look forward to working with you.
Yes, thank you.
It's been a pleasure so far and we look forward to continuing. That said, that brings us to public comment. We did not receive any submissions or folks that signed up, but as always, if there's anybody that would like to make a public comment. Hearing none, we will move to new business and our first item, we have some friends in the audience to present the school improvement plans for '25 through '27 are elementary principals. Good evening and welcome.
Come on down.
Feel like we just did this.
They don't feel that way, no.
I'm in the middle. I don't know why that happens.
She needs the microphone because she's so quiet.
Oh, I have to click. Left. Hi, everyone. Right. Okay.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us here. As Mr. Friendly said, we are here to present to you our school improvement plans. One of the things I'd like to just let everyone know here at the table is that we create these school improvement plans with input from our school advisory councils. A lot of work has been put into these. We've held some meetings with our school advisory councils to ensure that we put together a comprehensive school improvement plan. We do get input both from parents, community members, and teachers that are, that serve on this council. This year begins a two-year plan, so these plans that you'll hear about tonight, they begin for this school year 2025 and will take us to the end of the 2027 school year. We develop these school improvement plans to make sure that the work that we're doing in our buildings supports our district strategic plan, which was developed a few years ago. Throughout the year, you get updates on that information. And really what's really important and something that we pride ourselves on is that we all work very collaboratively together to ensure that all of these plans that you hear tonight and the goals that we're gonna present to you are aligned, both from, you know, pre-K all the way up through grade five. So to get us started, our first school goal is to improve student attendance and reduce absenteeism through proactive communication, family partnerships, and consistent implementation of the district's attendance policy. Our hope is that by September of 2027, sorry, by spring of 2027, there will be a 20% decrease in the number of students absent 10 or more days and at least 75% of our families will report an understanding of the district's attendance policy and our expectations. So in order to achieve this goal, we have a number of initiatives and actions along with some measurable outcomes for success. The first one that's very important is we're going to strengthen communication of our attendance policies. What we will be doing is we'll be providing this information in our families' home languages. We're gonna be sharing this information through digital platforms, printed materials, and other communication channels. Each of our buildings and the elementary will be creating our attendance teams. We will be establishing our attendance teams within our buildings. We'll be meeting regularly to monitor and analyze our student attendance data, identify any trends that become noticeable, and work collaboratively with those in our buildings to coordinate interventions. When we have those identified, we will then work to provide targeted supports for those at-risk students and families. We will develop those plans for those families and students and what we will do is we will be able to work with our school counselors, our family engagement specialists, to make sure that those are identified and they can be supported and we can help.
In conjunction with that, we...
You do have two.
Oh, there's two. We will engage with families through both education aid outreach. We wanna make sure, again, going back to our first initiative, that we are not only sharing with families what the policies are, but why attendance is important, so that they understand the reasoning behind that, why we need families to help get on board and get their child to school, the impact of absenteeism, and we'll do that through a variety of means, informational sessions, workshops, and formal events. We're also hoping to really work to ensure consistent follow-up and resource sharing so that we are meeting with families, we're providing individualized letters, meeting with them to help figure out what resources they need to get their child to school and helping to provide those resources for them. Finally, we're going to support those student transitions. We've talked at length, I think, here at, you've talked at length about the transitions between schools in this district, so to help ensure that those students, once we've identified those families, we are working collaboratively with those schools above us during the transition years to support those successes and ensure that any interventions that are put in place are maintained through the transition years, through some transition meetings and other support networks. All right.
Yeah, so we have our second school goal. It is to strengthen Tier One small group instruction in literacy and math, so we're hoping by spring of 2027, we will increase our targeted small group instruction within the classroom. We'll measure the success of this by observing more small group instruction in both literacy and math. 70% of all students will meet or exceed individual growth targets and achieve an SGP, which is the student growth percentile, greater than 50% on all benchmarks using DIBELS, AMESWEB, MCAS, and MSDA data or other district determined measures depending on the grade level that we have.
So some of the things we're gonna do is we're gonna use the data from universal screeners. Educators will develop and adjust differentiated small group classroom instruction, review and utilize the small group strategies and practices included both the ELAHMH curriculum as well as the Envision Math Program. We're also gonna review all the data sources listed above, MCAS, DIBELS, AMESWEB, MSDA, or other district determined measures to identify students who would benefit from small group instruction to meet the next benchmark level. Continue discussions throughout the year using, during data meetings, PLCs, enrichment time, and/or staff meetings, ongoing principal observations, and data collection. And we will measure this by documenting growth and progress monitoring, expanded intervention menu available in the MTSS map, principal observational data, small group instruction, increase in targeted student SGP on district and state assessments, and we currently have data meetings three times a year with documented instructional adjustments. And the last one is create opportunities for teachers to model best practices of small group instruction, identify and determine professional development opportunities and resources for teachers to enhance small group instructional practices, and small group instruction will increase in measured on end of the year curriculum surveys.
Our third school goal, by the end of the '26-'27 school year, elementary schools across the district will increase family satisfaction with engagement and communication by 20% as measured by an elementary-based family survey. This goal will be achieved through intentional improvements in accessibility, family connection, and communication practices.
So the first goal, the first initiative is to improve student registration process and that will be, it will start at the early childhood centers where it sounds like registration can be a little bit of a beast at times because it all, there's an onslaught of it all at the same time. So needing to simplify those registration forms and streamline that process, making sure that communication and materials that are related to registration will be available in multiple languages. Families will be notified when the registration files are complete, meaning like, you're all set, you don't need anything else to, to submit. And then we'll be hosting parent information sessions each January for families entering the district the following year.
We're going to enhance families, the family-school connection by providing more accessibility to administrators through a series of coffee with principal or assistant principal sessions that will occur quarterly to build relationships, and also to gather feedback from families. We'll have an online family Q and A form launched by spring twenty-six, with responses provided within five days. School introduction videos produced and shared via WCTV by fall of twenty-six, and shared out with families for transitions and new enrollments.
And then another initiative or action would be to expand accessibility and inclusion, so making sure that we're utilizing the translation and interpretation services to provide access to all pertinent information, including curriculum presentations, PAC events, and information and community resources to all of the families that need it, as well as representation in school visuals, signage, and decor will reflect the diversity of our students and their greater community.
We'll provide meaningful family learning opportunities through a series of family workshops on key topics such as bullying prevention, as well as social-emotional learning. These nights will be offered at least three times per year.
And then finally, we're going to garner feedback from families, make sure that family engagement and communication surveys are conducted in the winter and then the spring of twenty-seven, and results will be analyzed to inform further improvements that need to happen. We've worked collaboratively on all three of these goals. We want our, both sides of town to be similar, and we work collaboratively together.
And I think one of the things that we took away from the spring meeting was that, like, really provide solid metrics on each of the three goals, so that all the goals will in fact be measurable by the spring of twenty-twenty-seven.
Any questions?
I didn't want to interrupt.
Sit next to her.
Thank you. I'm sure there are questions. Who wants to start? Wow, guys don't all jump at once. Okay, Stephen. Mr. Turner.
I apologize, I did not think of this one in advance, but, but I, I believe I've seen the number for the high school level, but in terms of the number of students absent more than ten times in a year, where are we now? In terms of the twenty percent improvement, what's the baseline that you're working from?
So looking at data from the past few years, so if we look back at twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. The district attendance rate was at ninety-five point two percent. Chronic absenteeism rate was at nine point one percent. When we're looking at the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year, the district's attendance rate was at ninety-five point four percent, and the chronic absenteeism rate was at seven point two percent. So there was definitely an increase, you know, a decrease there, so there was improvement. The goal obviously is we're going into the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. We are, you know, we've looked at the past data, we tried to identify some trends already. We are working collaboratively, as I mentioned, with our school counselors and our family engagement specialists to identify kind of those trends in, in those students that, that they haven't kind of met that criteria just yet, but we're starting to notice kind of commonalities. So what we're doing is we are working with them already to try to come up with plans to reduce that. So the goal is to take what we've presented tonight, really implement that, and our hope is that even by the spring, we'll have some data, again, using kind of a program called Open Architects. It really kind of pulls all of the data points together in one location, which has been super helpful for us.
I really appreciate that goal. It's one of the things that we've talked about here a few times, both at the elementary level, but also as well at the, the middle and high school level, and, and just the, if the kids aren't here, we can't, we can't teach them. So I, the importance of attendance and availability to learn is, is just, it's, it's just the first step, and, and I'm really glad that that's one of your main goals this, this time through. Thank you.
I think the other thing that was super helpful was, you know, between the transitions between buildings, we meet and we talk about specific kids, you know, things that we need to know before they step into our, the next school on day one. So when one of the Woodburn Street students who came to fourth grade started, you know, the first month of school with a few absences, that, so, you know, three absences is not a big deal, but knowing the history, that was really helpful, whereas normally, we wouldn't necessarily have that conversation. I would have to go looking in the file, it's like two or three more steps. It was just one step, one conversation. I had a list of students that I needed to keep an eye on, and we've had meetings with those families immediately before the end of September, like, what's our plan? How are we going to support you? What do you need? Those things. And we've already seen improvements.
That's fantastic, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Exo.
Just following up on, on kind of the same goal. Obviously, you've done a lot of collaboration between the six of you, kind of working on these goals. I'm curious if you found that there were any substantial differences in that initial baseline of the missing ten or more days rates among your schools, like if it's concentrated in certain grade levels or on certain sides of town, or if it was roughly the same?
I can jump in on that, too. So right now, we're just in the process of putting our attendance committees together at each school, so all of that baseline data and information, we're going to be starting to look at. So that's what part of the committees are going to do, is that we're going to start looking at the data and the trends in each of the schools.
I will say, I know, looking at, I was on the attendance committee as well, looking at historical data, the Wildwood in particular struggles with attendance historically, and I think part of that is linked to the fact that we house the majority of the program students with complex needs at the early childhood level, who often have multiple factors that may impede their attendance. So that is something, again, for me personally, that we are working on and trying to target specific skills there. My, my numbers are the worst.
But I, I think that gets to a really important point, which is that it's not the same groups of students necessarily who are missing, missing a lot of school. It's like there are very distinct patterns that you'll sometimes see, or at least, we need to be looking to see if there are and identifying what those are, so that we can have some, some interventions along the way. And similar to that, I was, sorry, I just lost my train of thought. Oh, that, do we have any way of looking at this as we go through the year and kind of, I know it's, it's kind of tough, especially when you're only talking about ten days, because you can get a cluster of days all of a sudden, like, it's not necessarily evenly, absences aren't necessarily evenly distributed throughout the year, but I wonder if there's a way that we can sort of see students that are on track towards, towards hitting that mark. It's just like, at least our best projections, that at this current pace, you're going to miss more than ten days, and let's see if we can kind of get in here and figure out what's happening, so that we don't have to just wait till the end of the year to see if we've done it or not, but to be, you know, constantly looking at this.
So I think to piggyback on what Diane had mentioned, you know, looking at that data and, and having those conversations, you know, with Stacy's students that are moving up, you know, initially, you think three days isn't a big deal, but when you look back at the data, the historical data on, you know, that particular student or that particular family, and you see that there was a trend, she went right in ahead and, and started kind of proactively working with those, that family. So I think that's, that's really what one of our goals is to do, is to really be able to identify those trends and then not be reactive, but proactive, to ensure that if there's any barriers, that we can kind of help them overcome those, and we can put those interventions and supports in place early on, so that we're not waiting until June to say, oh, we have a problem.
And we do have Aspen gives us alerts when it's over five for families or students, so that we can already start to get ahead of it. And that's also part of what the attendance committee does. I mean, it's, it's sort of like what we do already, but now we're going to have support doing this work when we form those committees. So Aspen does give us automatic notifications when students are above five absences, and we do have a system with letters that we send out and notifications, so we're well on top of it before they get to ten.
I think another thing that's going to be really helpful for us is as we, kind of diving into the Open Architects platform, when you go through that attendance dashboard, it actually will show you which students are on either an upward trajectory or a downward trajectory, in terms of their attendance in particular, so you can say, oh, look, you know, this student started off shaky, but we're on, headed in the right direction, or this student is headed downhill, we need to really jump in and do something.
And it shows you over years, so it's, it's really incredible. Like, you can look at it and you can, you can find trends already, like, oh, they're always out the week before, or something, you know, and you can get ahead of it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Exo. Mr. Golden.
Thank you all for being here. Two questions. The attendance team, says attendance team and person's responsible is who?
So the anticipation of the attendance team is going to be a staff member, so a teacher, the family engagement specialist, most likely a counselor, the principal, I don't know if you guys School nurse. And that, so that would make up the team.
My second question is, the term differentiated, differentiated small group instruction, for the folks at home, and for me, what do we mean by that?
So differentiated means that you are changing your instruction based on student needs. So whether you have a group of students that need to work on a certain skill set, then the teacher would be having a small group working on that specific skill set. Same with if, or enrichment, you know, if you have children that are exceeding the expectations, that small group may look different, because it's differentiated based on what those students need.
So everyone is working on the same topic, objective, however, how they get to that endpoint might look differently throughout the class. So they just scattered throughout, might have more advanced enrichment opportunities for students, or some more lower level for students who really need to just access that, that general topic. So it's a little bit of everything to meet the student where they're at.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Golden. Dr. Brison.
Thank you, thanks for being here. I always look forward to seeing you all. I'm very excited about goal three. I think this is really exciting to see. I would love to think a little bit about how we gather the feedback from families. Actually, you can go back to the other one.
Oh, which one you want?
The one, that one, Yashan.
The last one. This one?
That one, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I didn't know you were talking over that.
This, I, you know, so the survey, I just did a family engagement survey that came out from somewhere, and it was very, it's very one-way, right? And I think that we all know this, we're trying to create partnerships or two-way, right? So it's like information from the school to the home, and information from the home to the school. And I think the elementary space is like the perfect place to build those, those skills and strategies and, and comfort with school, and then as, because I think a lot of families would probably say, I felt really comfortable at Battle Wild, I felt really comfortable, I felt really welcome, right? And I think, felt really welcome with the Shawshank, but then as we kind of see kids go through, there's this like, I'm not sure how to engage, but I think sometimes we're not, we don't always, not that we're teaching, but we're not sort of embracing this idea of two-way communication, like, what does that look like? And so if you look, it's like, we're going to make sure that they get workshops on this, like, we're going to make sure they, and they know this, we're going to tell them this, but I think most of, I think we're all, are we all parents? We all know, as educators, we, we know how to, how to engage with schools. We feel very comfortable, like, I feel very comfortable sending a welcome email to the teachers and being like, hi, I'm so-and-so, and this is, but I actually, a large percentage of families who may not be in education feel that sense of comfort, and so when we're thinking about family engagement, I would love to sort of, aside from just saying, you need to know this about bullying, you need to know this about Aspen, you need to know this about, I feel like we need to know how families want to engage with us, too, and I know we all know this, but I still think when we see a lot of these, these goals or these ways to get there, it's still very much, we're doing it right here, you need to know what we're doing here, and good luck. And I think they're very happy, probably at that level, but then as they go through, we're like, ooh, maybe we didn't teach them, and we didn't expose it in the right way that they have those skills to carry for, then they know they can email, say, the middle school team, or they can email the high school teachers, like, there's this feeling of, I don't know where to go next. So I'm just, when I'm thinking about this feedback from families, I'm like, it's not just about, how can we give you, how can we teach you more, but how can you help us to know better, how we can better serve your kid? I don't, does that make sense? Like, it's this, how do we really create, I think we all say we're creating these two-way streets, and I don't mean just Wilmington, I mean everywhere I go, but when you look at it, it's really, we're telling you how to do this, as opposed to come into our buildings and help us to do this, too, aside from the Saks and the Paks, which tend to have the same families who can volunteer over and over again, tend to meet during the, really make sure that we're exposing this to all families. So I guess it's just sort of a, not even a question, but a, when you are thinking about those surveys, think about ways to really, I think, really, like, not improve, but how could we actually create this two-way street? Does that make sense?
It does, yeah, and I think we, you know, last year, we had sent out kind of a communication survey, and we were trying to gather kind of that information from families to see, you know, how would they like to, you know, like, what do they need help with, and how could we better support them? Like, the example you gave, like, you know, yeah, sure, it's okay to email your middle school, that whole team, kind of like, what is that process, or what is that kind of chain of, of communication, or, and so we really kind of honed in on that last year.
We took some of that data, yeah.
We did take some of that data, and I know we're going to take a look at that, so when we do develop those surveys, we're going to take the information that we did gather from families, to try to really make sure that we, we're developing that kind of two-way communication.
Like, one of the ideas we came up with was that, because we know that a lot of parents are not coming in to view workshops and things like that, so we talked about doing like a panel on Zoom with all of us together. And so, like, those are some of the things we're thinking about, to try to make it a little different. More people might be able to engage at night, and knowing that we're all there, we're all available, sort of like question-and-answer sessions, whether we're having it be guided with, you know, topics that we get ahead of time, or if it's just, you know, but all of us together, so we're not all doing separate things. So that was like one of the ideas that, that we want to do as an action.
And some of us are a little bit more savvy with technology, so some of us might be really comfortable doing podcasts and those things, and then trying to twist the arms of others sitting on the table.
Don't worry about it.
But, you know, those are some things that we've been trying to, to, to get from families, too, to see, you know, how do they want that information, what's the information they want, and what's the information that they need, and so that they're comfortable coming into, whether it be the Battle of the Wild with Shawshank, the high school, wherever.
Yeah.
And so I think it's, it's, it's been helpful, and I think, you know, taking that information and really having us all sit down together to develop those surveys, I think will be beneficial.
And what information do we need from families to better serve their kids, and how valuable that is? Like, I think, we, I mean, parents know their children in very different ways, and I still, to this day, I mean, I'm almost through this district, and I'll say something about one of my children, they'll be like, oh, really? She would never know that. Like, I hear, and imagine, we all hear pieces of, huh, would never have known that. I mean, some people have known my kid, that's, but there's just two sides to our kids, right? And there's something that I think as families, we can really contribute, and I, if there's something really going on, I know, as teachers, we say, like, let us know if someone, like, if a pet passed, like, let us know, like, trying to know this, because I interact with my child today, and I just feel like to make that more just like a, a typical occurrence, instead of those who feel like, oh, I'm super comfortable emailing the whole team. Like, I don't think everyone feels that sense of comfort, so I think it's just, I think so I'm excited to see it, and I hope that we can kind of broaden the way we think about it as we move forward. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Turner.
One follow-up on that and one other quick point. I think the idea of all six of you doing a Zoom together is phenomenal, partly because you've got families that have kids in, you know, two of the schools, and they can see the, the common approach and the common communication. I think it's, it's a great idea, and, and it also allows you guys to all do it at once and do it from a, a place that works best for your schedules as well. One quick request, I know in some districts, the translation services that go outbound and back, translating both ways automatically, I've seen some really fascinating translations that are funny in the moment, but if you're actually thinking about how you're communicating, it's a little concerning, and this is not for this district, it's for other districts I'm aware of. So if you ever hear or see of those sorts of scenarios, providing feedback in terms of how, the translation tools we have, are they good enough? All of them, they struggle with idioms, they struggle with slang, all those sorts of things that you might get, communication coming back from parents particularly, but even if you see it coming back from the parents and it doesn't make sense, it also leads you to question what the parent actually saw on the way out. So if you see things and hear things, providing feedback back to the, the district in terms of the tools we're using, are they good enough? Obviously, they all, they'll all evolve over time, but, but I think that'll be very helpful, because it's one thing to say we're translating, but if what they're getting doesn't make sense, that doesn't really help either, so I want to make sure that we don't lose, have things literally lost in translation on that side. So if, if you can provide feedback as you get it, that would be really helpful, to know that we have the right tools.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Exo.
Following up on goal three, can you talk a little bit about how this, so the, the goal states that satisfaction will be measured or will increase by twenty percent as measured by an elementary-based family survey? How will that exactly be measured? Like, is there a single question that asks, are you satisfied with your, with your engagement? Like, is there a single question that asks, are you satisfied with your with your engagement? And, I mean, these types of things usually have a variety of questions. And even within them, there's a, you know, somewhat satisfied, very satisfied. And so I'm kind of just curious exactly how are we deriving this 20% figure or the baseline that we're trying to increase from?
So I think we're going to be developing the survey, but I think, you know, some of the action steps that were taken around expanding accessibility. So I think increasing accessibility, um, to our, to families, to us, uh, it was, is a big part of it through, um, obviously like a Zoom-type, um, meeting where all of us are on it, but also the the the, um, the coffee with principals or just kind of those those kind of, um, opportunities where they can, you know, have that two-way conversation with us um, that isn't like in a, um, uh, like a phone call or an email about like a- concern in schools. Kind of just getting to know the families and make them feel comfortable with us. Increasingly, those opportunities, I think, is a, is something that, like, we- real feedback from families, are they happy with it? Do they find us that we're available and accessible to them? Are they comfortable coming to us? Um, I think providing, uh, those workshops and learning opportunities are also, um, key. And I think hearing them on what they want to learn more about, like, in our buildings. Because I think there is like a lot that, like, families can offer us as far as information that we can better support their their children. So that kind of developing accessibility to create that two-way communication between families and the administration, we can start crafting what we need specifically in our buildings. And hopefully, like, you know, through that, we'll see parents become, we'll feel more welcome in our schools, they'll feel more comfortable with us. Um, I mean, there's a lot of different ways that we could actually go with this as far as like what we would provide, uh, those learning opportunities. I think we all kind of have a different grade band, so there's, you know, different things that happen in each one of the schools that are relevant. Um, but I I think, um, you know, having them, we can definitely judge how they're feeling towards like the accessibility and comfort with us and creating that two-way communication. Because I think that's, um, that's the key. Sending newsletters and emails are great for like just announcing things, but like, it's the two-way communications where you really build those relationships. And those relationships are really what's what's drives that, you know, that school community.
And our school councils, they're going to help us with all of this. So this is, this is just the start of it. So once we start to develop those questions, we're going to have that, um, input from parents already that they can help help us ask questions or help us develop the surveys when we get there.
Yeah, and I should say that I I love the initiatives and actions, like this list of of ideas that you've put forth, I think are absolutely fantastic and, um, and, you know, goods in themselves, like, kind of independent, things we should be doing anyway, even if there was no measurable survey increase. But I I did want to kind of get a sense of, how are we trying to pinpoint where we are now? And how will we know if we've done even better than we are?
So I think, again, back to that that communication survey that we think that we had last year. You know, I think we're using that essentially as our baseline and then developing this two-year plan, you know, and and as Mike said, um, you know, we're going to work collaboratively to, again, create that, um, using that baseline data that we have, um, to see kind of if we can meet that threshold.
I was gonna say, I think, you know, it says here, we're going to do our first survey this winter, which will-
That will be the first baseline.
Will give us, hopefully, a lot, you know, we have a lot of ideas of what we think needs to happen, but this is an opportunity for families to tell us what they're looking for. And then I do think, to your point, there'll be some sort of rating number, data, that we can look to in, you know, a year and a half to say, we asked the same question and the number is higher or it's not. But this first time is really a chance to also not just get that numerical data to, for the 20%, but to say, how do we make that jump? What do families look for and how can we improve?
Uh, I I think that breaking breaking it down into like, into these different elements is important because we could get next year, two years hence. And even if we, whether we met the 20%, even if we had like a single question that at one point just said, how satisfied are you with engagement and communication?
Yeah, exactly.
Whatever that number is, it's probably more important to know, but how do you feel about the actual individual pieces of it? Because you might find out that one is, you know, 70%, but one is 50%. And, you know, you you could still find some gaps, some places where it's truly, you know, excellent and some places that there's still room for improvement. And some of that just kind of gets washed together in the overall satisfaction number. And so I think looking looking broadly at these different different measures will be, um, will be most useful to us.
But that could be something as simple as a quick QR code at the end as an exit ticket when, after a coffee with the principals or after a, um, you know, an online panel or whatever, right? It could be, and if we did that after every single time, and we could actually ask the community engagement specialists to do that as well and craft that question, how helpful was this? Or how, you know, maybe it's two questions, how helpful was this specific activity? And how satisfied are you with the, um, level of, you know, parent involvement or whatever? Um, and and do that every single time and have those be our baseline questions that we ask every single time we have communication with with families.
Thank you, Mr. Exo. Dr. McCollough?
No questions, just comment. So, uh, I thought the goals were pretty great. Uh, so thank you, a lot of thought went into them. I really love how you're all aligned too, uh, and making sure both sides of town are putting together the same educational efforts and everything like that. Um, and I just want to maybe put someone on the spot. Um, this is the last time, I think Dr. Carrera is going to be here in front of us. Just want to say thank you for all your years of service. Um, so, uh, I had the fortunate experience of having both my girls under the North when she was the principal, and they had wonderful times there. So thank you for everything you did and best of luck on your new endeavor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't have daughters, but I'll second that. Mr. Exo?
Um, I'd like to get into goal two a little bit. I first have kind of a clarifying question that part of that goal is that 70% of all students will meet or exceed individual growth targets and achieve an SGP greater than 50%. And so one is, how are, how are we determining these individual growth targets? Like, how are we deciding everyone's individual, your growth target is, you know, is XYZ? What does that go to, how do we figure that out? And then I I I don't quite understand the, maybe SGP is calculated differently on assessments like DIBELS and AMESware, but for, and I think you mentioned MCAS as well. Um, for, that's, it's possible on MCAS because we're only one district. Um, and student growth percentages are calculated based on the entire state. Um, but it's a norm reference criterion. And for example, it wouldn't be possible for all students in Massachusetts to achieve greater than 50% SGPs, because the whole idea is that you take everything and just list it from one to 100, and there's as many people at the bottom as there are at the top. So when we're only talking about our own populations, um, I'm not sure how we achieve SGPs greater than 50% for all students.
I would say, I think, one, I don't think we're aiming for all students. You know, we're really aiming for that 70%, but it is, I would say, certainly within DIBELS and those, it does calculate that for you, um, that we anticipate that, I'm just going to make up a number. If your score was 100, the goal for you by the end of the year is 125. And so if you meet that, you've met your student growth percentile. And if you don't, then you do not, because that's a nationally normed assessment. Um, I think our goal here is that, essentially saying here in Wilmington, students, 70% of our students will exceed those targets because we think we have the resources and the population to be able to do that. We'll find out if we're accurate. But I do think, you know, I, we have noticed, we have a fairly strong group-
Yes.
Right now.
Yes.
Um, and so we want to continue to help them exceed. I think this, the goal of this was to partially not say that we are going to reach benchmark levels because we don't just want to reach benchmark levels. We want to take those students who already started there or started above that level to continue to push them to stay at that level. So that's where we sort of delved into the SGP, that it wasn't just reaching benchmarks, it was to continue to keep those students who were above benchmark at above benchmark.
Okay. All right. And I, so, and I think the, sort of the answer about the, to me, you said it was nationally normed. So it's, they're getting SGPs not just from-
Correct.
Not relative to just Wilmington population.
No, no, it's much bigger than that.
Great. Um, I wanted to know why in particular small group instruction was essentially chosen as the, kind of the means by which we are going to be, uh, working on our literacy and and math. So there, because obviously, there are lots of things you could say, just like, ooh, you know, how are we going to teach kids to read and do math better? There are lots of different ways you could try to do it. Um, why was this the one that you wanted to focus on for the next few years?
You can, got it.
So I think that, um, you know, part of our drive was making sure that we had really strong tier-one instruction. We have that within math, we have that now with the new reading program. Um, so, having said that, we know that we can sort of up the ante, up that growth score if teachers are focusing on small group instruction with students who are missing, um, missing something by maybe one or two points, right? So if a teacher does a pre-assessment or uses formative assessment data and realizes there's a whole group of kids in her class or in their class that's missed a skill, the goal of that small group instruction is to reteach that skill so that when they're assessed at the end, they have gotten that skill. So the goal, so we have the tier-one reading and math instruction set. Now we're focusing a little bit more granular so that we can really pinpoint the students who need just a little bit more, who maybe they don't qualify for reading or math support, but they just need something maybe re-taught or taught in a different way or taught again. Um, and we're using the resources within the classroom to do that.
I think one other area too is there are, there are students who are high achieving, like on the MCAS, but they might have low, low growth, which is going to be problematic because if they continue to have low growth, that high achieving score will start to slide down and because of the low growth. The small group instruction, all it gives you, the teacher, the opportunity to maybe provide a little bit more rigorous, alternative, um, work on the same topic, but maybe a little more challenging, maybe a little bit deeper, teach the concept and challenge that student, push that student to the level that they should, they they can be at, as opposed to just giving them something where, yeah, they can do the the simple grade level, um, topic, and that's evidenced by their high, high achieving score on the MCAS. But, you know, their low growth, eventually, that's going to, that's going to bring them back down to the pack. So the small group's going to allow the teacher to also push those students as well, along along with creating opportunities to support students that may require a little bit extra support as well.
Okay, so it's, it sounds to me as though we're, as though we're aiming to target and differentiate more clearly, as you're saying, at the top and the bottom. So some students who can, you know, handle and use a little bit more than what they've previously gotten in the, you know, in the classroom and people who are, for whatever reason, missing a few skills that just like, yep, they're, not everyone necessarily needs that. You have a bunch of students who have that from the tier-one instruction, but but there are some who needs, need that topic re-taught.
But I don't think it necessarily has to be kids at the top or the bottom. It could be a student who's just struggling with fractions. They know everything else, but they're really struggling with fractions.
Yeah, that was-
It could be a great student, but they're just, they're not getting that, that, that skill so that you're re-teaching them. It really should be all students are sitting at the table with the teacher. It shouldn't just be your top or your bottom.
Yeah, no, that, you're absolutely right. That, that's, that was a bad way that I put it. It's like, because you're, you're absolutely correct, that it's, it's not, it's not a general thing. It's about the specific gaps-
Yes.
That can happen anywhere.
And need backfilling.
I think the, uh, the the larger comment I have about this goal is I, is that I think that it's, I think it's written a little bit backwards, um, that strengthening the tier-one small group instruction is not an end in itself. Uh, that's, you know, that, that's a technique, that's a way of getting to where we actually want to go. And that's why I was trying to kind of peel the, like, what we're actually aiming to achieve with this. Um, and and I think that's what you've just been been talking about, that like, what we're trying to achieve is that kind of targeted, uh, you know, reteaching at all different kinds of levels for skills that might have been missed or that haven't been covered adequately. And that this is the, uh, these are, this is the action step that we think is going to help us achieve that as far as is dealing with our, with our literacy and and math instruction going forward. But the, but the small group instruction, again, it's a means, not an end. And the goal should really be kind of phrased in terms of the ends, that we're trying to achieve these, uh, you know, growth targets and SGP marks for our benchmarks. And this is the method by which we think that we're going to do it, and then we have specific action steps to go down there. I don't know, maybe that's a semantic distinction because in the end, we're kind of doing the same thing. Um, but I always like us to be, to be focused on the actual end results that we're hoping to see uh, so that we can really focus our, you know, measures and goals on whether we're achieving that rather than just the steps that we're going to take to get there when we then just look to see whether we did the steps as a measurement of of whether the goal was met.
I think I would say though, as well, you know, coming off of our last, um, school improvement plan, we were really focused on the implementation of a new tier-one program, specifically in ELA. Um, and I think, I will certainly only speak for the Wildwood, but teachers were beginning to implement that program. We spent a lot of time and effort in terms of them learning the program as a whole. The program in itself has some small group practices that we were not able to implement initially because the focus was on the program as a whole and sort of the the big picture items that we needed to hit over time. And so as we were talking through this school improvement plan, I think we had conversations about how we needed a next step from that. We implemented a program, now we want to be better at that program. And to be better at that program, we need to do the small group portions of that program as well, not just the whole group parts. Does that make sense? So that the tier-one, the tier-one small group pieces, the small group instruction itself was partly the target, to have those things happening within the greater program.
And I think that's why we felt that it was, it was important for us to have it as part of the goal and not just an action step, because it's something, um, somewhat different than what we're doing, what we had been doing in the past.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Exo. Wanting to be mindful of time. Any other questions, comments, closing thoughts? I mean, it's always a pleasure for us to have you all here. I know you probably want to stay for the MCAS presentation, but understand, we won't be offended if you choose to go home. I'm sure it's been a long day, but, uh, great, great plan. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Not at all. Lisa?
Can I have the remote? Oh, no.
All right, and of course, no rush, but as we all get resettled, Ms. Elliott, whenever you are ready, next item is the MCAS report and presentation.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
I I often, I'm glad they get to go home before I present, but, um, it actually, it is also helpful to hear already what they're doing that will, um, address what's happening with our MCAS results. So thanks for having me. So, um, I will get started with just the agenda. So tonight, I'll be presenting our 2025 spring MCAS results. And, um, the agenda, it's really our roadmap for tonight. We'll be talking about, um, the pre-pandemic scores from Wilmington versus current. And the reason for that focus is there's a strong, um, uh, there's a lot of conversation around, districts really on that path to recovery, trying to aim for where we were back before pandemic, and we know that impact on, uh, learning. So, um, we wanted to be able to pull some of that data together to to share with you. And I know the principals mentioned this evening the use of Open Architects, so you will see that this, um, presentation looks different than we've done in the past. We, they've really, um, enhanced the product and it gives us a lot of resources and information to pull. So I wanted to be able to share some of that, um, from that platform as well tonight. Um, so we'll talk about those scores. Um, they are also emphasizing looking at cohorts of students. And I know since 2020, all of us have gone, okay, these kids were in this age when this happened. And so I think it's just helpful to really look at cohorts of students. Um, so it did include a little information there. Uh, and that is, um, you're only seeing a tiny bit of it in this presentation this evening, but that's something that we're constantly looking at, um, at our data meetings and working with principals and their teams as well. Um, we'll look at the grade level performance over time and state and district trends, and then moving forward, next steps. So, um, looking at the, um, pre-pandemic versus now, um, we still have work to do, no doubt. Um, the first slide here is ELA, this is just Wilmington prior, this is all grade levels, um, prior to the pandemic and currently, and then it's broken down by grade levels. Um, the top slide is ELA and the bottom slide is math. So, um, in our district specifically, I feel like we've seen, um, the biggest impact, well, it's varied, but I feel like we've had a bigger impact in ELA than in math, but I think that was all- But I think that was also partly due to our transition from one ELA program to another. And as you know, we, uh, this was, we've had one full year of our, um, new reading program. So, um, with, this is one year of reading and, and we're backfilling as we go with some of the kids. Because it's important to remember that we rolled out the entire new program K to five. So for example, our fifth graders came into this program without any prior experience from the program. So there are of course prerequisite skills that are assumed that students have moving up through the program. Um, so that as we, um, roll a program out like that, it does take time to make sure that, um, you know, the kids are getting what they need. So to be able to be successful and access the curriculum. Um, so those are our ELA and math. Um, and then the next slide, um, is actually a really positive, um, slide to show that we have actually exceeded our scores in science, um, from pre-pandemic scores overall to, to current, uh, this past spring. So that's exciting news. And again, the science is done in fifth, eighth and 10th grade. So, um, or currently we're doing it in ninth, but it's reported out as 10th for biology now. Um, but that's these three grade levels over time. When you add them together, you can see that we have, um, definitely, um, made some progress. And this next slide talks about the cohort performance. And it took me a little while myself to really, um, orient myself to the slide. I really want to say orientate for Dr. Brand, but, um, but, uh, I know, so I do miss that. But, um, so I, I did spend some time looking at this myself, trying to wrap my head around it. So, um, for those maybe watching at home or looking at it, uh, for the first time, you know, our, so when we see our current fourth graders, um, with that 24, 25, so those are our students that are in seat in, in grade four right now, but took this test in third grade. So 50% of those students who are now fourth graders either met or exceeded the expectations of the assessment, um, in ELA this past spring. So, and then the next row going down, those are our current fifth graders. So we're looking at, um, how they did in third and fourth. And then going across our sixth graders, third, fourth and fifth. So you can follow along that way. It took me a little while. And then if you take a look at the, um, the shading, that is, um, higher percentage rates have a darker shading. So it's like a heat map. So that's the ELA performance and then math as well. Uh, and if it's blank, it, some students don't take particular tests in certain grades. So, um, there, you'll see those blanks there as well. So again, just as a, it's a quick glance to see that progression over time, but, um, and you know, it, I think it's sometimes helpful to wa, follow that cohort of students over time to see their performance. Um, we don't have that same data for science, obviously, because they're not taking it year over year. It's the, um, fifth grade, um, eighth grade and then in the high school level. So now the next slide, um, slides, we're going, each one will cover sort of a, I'll give you, um, the big picture of, uh, each grade level and whatever assessments they participate in at that grade level. So these charts will give you, again, the bar graph will show, um, pre-pandemic and current, the trends. Um, again, the darker blue is the exceeding, the medium blue is meeting, um, expectations gray is partially meeting expectations and the red is, um, not meeting. And you can also see the, um, you know, the line plot as well, following the trend. And the green is Wilmington. And then the gray line is the state average, just to get you, um, familiar with that. And then on the right-hand side of each one, you'll see the average percent correct, um, by category as well. So we're, uh, able to really look at the breakdown, um, from, for ELA, for example, reading, language, um, essay writing, essay and writing. So for grade three ELA overall, they remained fairly stable, um, over the last four years. They're slightly above the state average, yet still aligned with the overall performance trajectory of the, of the state. So very similar pattern. I was really, uh, think, had my fingers crossed that we were going to see, uh, a significant increase with our third grade ELA, given the work we've done with structured literacy, early literacy skills and implementing the new program. I do recognize, as much as I want to deny it, that oftentimes a new implementation, you see a dip, um, in scores. But, um, I, so you know, it'll be, um, it'll be telling over time to really see the difference. Um, and you know, I know everyone is working so hard and they're so focused on, um, providing solid instruction. And this is part of the reason I was thrilled when the principals talked to me about the, their school improvement goals and one of them being that small group instruction, because I think it's really where the rubber meets the road, if you will. It's really where you're able to get the most traction for kids to make, um, that more than a year's worth of growth by that really intentional small group instruction. And you know, from research and years of doing this work, I find that when the instruction is primarily whole group lessons, about a third of the kids, it's, it's at the right level for about a third of your class. A third, they don't really need, um, they, they get it and they could've gone further. And the other third need to be at the table, small group, they need it more concrete, they need it more hands-on. So, um, having the lesson be, you know, broken into shorter components of mini lessons and then small group reinforcement practice, you know, guided practice and independent practice. So really following that model, I think will be really helpful. Um, yeah.
Mr. Exo. Just a quick clarification on this. Did, did we, um, break out the essay separately on, on our own? Because that's not an official category.
Yes, it's, um, it's the, um, I'll have to look and see how they sort it. But I think it's the language conventions and that is the writing piece. And then the essay is where they're pulling the, um, written response.
Right, because essays are, are broken down to, there's an idea development and, uh, and then a conventions. But they're different, they're different categories. One is language and one is writing. So I was just, did we just combine them and just say maximum points on the essay? And here's how many points you got on the essay?
Yeah, I think that's where, how it's being pulled.
Okay.
For these charts, yes. And then, so grade three, we've seen a slight fluctuation over the past few years, um, slightly above the state average, yet mostly aligned with the overall performance trajectory again. Um, you can see that, you know, with the, um, you know, last year, we had some pretty strong results in math. Um, we saw an uptick. Um, but again, it's just important to really remember that each one of these bars you're seeing is a different cohort of students. Um, so you know, depending on the needs of a particular group of students, we might see that fluctuation over time. Um, but again, hovering above the state average, um, and, but pretty similar trajectory. For grade four ELA, um, we're seeing a slight upward trend, really in that recovery path. Um, over the past few years, reading and language is above the state average. Writing is our largest area of weakness. And this is not news to us. Um, and this is an area that we are, um, you know, now that we have the, um, new program, we've really had a heavy emphasis on the reading instruction this year, uh, last year and, and focusing on small group. And I envision us really starting to work more towards, um, strengthening the writing skills. The, the program itself has a really strong, um, a lot of practice for our students in responding in writing to their reading. So that I anticipate is going to help our scores overall in time. But we still want to be able to, um, really focus on, um, more consistent, uh, instruction with our writing, um, across all grade levels. And I know that, I mean, we're talking third grade here, but I know that this has been a, um, a huge part of the conversation with, um, high school. Um, our language, our, our ELA and social studies departments have common goals this year to work on, on consistent, writing, uh, expectations for students and using the same rubrics across, um, all, both of those content areas. So, um, it's definitely something that we're working on in each of the individual schools as well. So you didn't necessarily see it in school improvement plans here, but it's definitely a focus. Oops, did I, so for grade four, um, math, um, we're in a, I would say a pretty good place. We have made, you know, steady, um, growth and we've remained fairly stable over the last four years, above the state average in all, uh, categories. And our, we have good growth at 57.2. So you know, they're, they're showing solid growth. And I should've mentioned on these charts on the right with the green, um, the gray behind it, that little shadow of gray is the state. Um, yeah, is the state's performance and, um, ours is the green. So you can see that we've far exceeded that in math by far. So pleasantly, you know, really happy with the, the work we're seeing in grade four math as well. Uh, grade five, science, um, again, this has been a, a pretty positive trend. For the last three years, we've seen an improvement. The trajectory is on an upward swing. Um, and then this is broken down, um, below, um, for technology. You can see the different domains, but technology and engineering is a strength. Um, our WPS fifth graders exceeded the state average in every category in science. So this was definitely a, a strong suit. And I'm really happy to see this. I know, of course, we had implemented our elementary ma, um, science program, um, in, um, the year 2019 was a soft launch of our new program. Um, 2020, the world shut down and it was, there was no hands-on learning happening with science. Um, and then we sort of did another relaunch once we came back to school again. Um, but it was difficult to, uh, really, um, implement the, the program, knowing how important those hands-on experiments were. And so it took time for us to get there, but I feel like we are certainly seeing, um, this as a successful implementation. It's taken a little longer than we would've liked, but I'm happy to see that, um, we're continuing to see that growth. Grade six, um, ELA, we, um, you know, again, if, if you look at that trajectory, we're following the straight state. Well, I will say we are above the state trajectory, which is nice. At one point in time, you can see we were below it. Um, so that has been a positive trend forward. Um, you know, the last three years have been relatively stable, um, with some fluctuation. Um, so we're, you know, um, our reading and language is stronger than our writing skills again in this grade level as well. Um, we, we are higher in all categories than the state at this point in time. I should point out that currently, right now, um, Ms. Parvayanen is running a, um, curriculum review committee at the middle school, looking at our ELA programming. And so, um, working with some teachers to really evaluate what we're currently doing, look at what, um, if there are areas that we can improve, do we need to look at new materials, new curriculum? Um, so we're, that work is underway as we speak. So hopefully we'll be able to report out more on that soon.
Just another clarifying question. How are we grouping this 2019 to 2021 category on all these graphs?
Because we didn't have, um, 2020 data, I think they just are categorizing it as, uh, because 21 was the, the modified year. Is that correct?
That was the year that grades three through eight only took one session.
Session. Um, so that, it's a good question. We're, for these charts, it doesn't give me 2019. For, to pull it in this format, it doesn't go back to that standalone 2019 data. However, we have access to that if we go into it. Um, it just wasn't pulling it here. So we are, uh, so this, I'm not.
So what data is that though? Do like what?
I, I don't know if it's a combination of 2019 and 21 combined. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent certain, but we are looking at the 2019 data in our own analysis when we did MCAS analysis to make sure we're comparing it. So, um, it, I, I did, um, look into that recently, trying to figure that out. And I have a question into the company to give me clarification on the exact what data that's from. But, um, at this point, you know, I haven't heard back from them yet. But this point, my, you know, knowing that it's still, you know, we're still under that score for most, except for science or many other subjects.
I, I think this might be 2021 data because I think we are lower than, than our last true pre, pre-pandemic, 2019. I mean, most, almost everyone is, but.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, for science you're thinking?
No, I, I'm just thinking, I'm just saying like, in, in general, that, uh, I, I think that, uh, it looks to me like this is not showing 2019 data. I, I would have to go look though.
And for sixth grade math, um, so we remain stable from the prior year. Um, we do have low growth in this particular, um, group. Um, definitely something that we need to look at. Um, and the trajectory is slightly improving in comparison to the state. You can see the separation starting there. Uh, grade seven ELA, variations in performance over the past few years. It's been up and down. Um, and it's, but we are, and you can see on the, the, in comparison to the state, we've sort of been all over. Um, and now we have actually, this particular last spring, we leveled out where, with the state where they are. But there's a lot of variation there. Um, in grade seven math, we did see, um, last year, the year before, we saw a, a significant increase. Um, so we saw a slight dip, um, this past year, but overall it's been relatively consistent over time. Um, so geometry and expressions and equations are close to the state average. Um, so, but the others have exceeded the state average. Grade eight, um, is for ELA, consistent and steady improvement over the past four years, which is really positive to see where we have seen fluctuation in grade six and seven. So as they hit that eighth grade mark, we're starting to see the, um, skills come together. And, um, but our growth, even though we're seeing improvement, the growth could still definitely be higher for, um, our eighth grade ELA students. And eighth grade math marked improvement in number of students exceeding and meeting expectations in math. And we had a strong growth percentile. So we were excited to see that big jump for this year for eighth grade math. Eighth grade science, um, again, we're seeing steady improvements, um, over time. And, um, um, you know, our, um, science scores are on an upward trajectory. While the state scores have declined over the past three years, we are starting to, you know, we're seeing our students exceed. And the grade eight civics is new this year. So we have data, um, this is our first year with published data for the civics assessment. So our Wilmington students performed consistently higher than the state in all three domains, um, which was exciting. So this is really baseline data for us, but, um, overall I would say our students did really well with 57% meeting or exceeding the expectations. And of course, we don't have growth data on this being a one, a test that's a standalone for one grade level. So, um, looking at our high school, um, grade 10 ELA. So 10th grade ELA had average growth, but, um, 50.1 SGP, but declined from, um, the prior year. So our trajectory is still above the state average, but following a similar path to the state. So, um, it was, um, unexpected to see the drop we saw this year for ELA. Um, you know, I don't think we've done anything significantly different other than increased rigor and really worked so hard at the high school level to, um, you know, you've seen so many, um, um, presentations from, um, Principal Gendron and all the work that's happening. Um, so I think it was a shock to see that we saw that bit of a drop. Um, so we're really not, we, you know, digging into all of that, trying to figure out why. Um, but, um, that wasn't anticipated. And then grade 10 math, so variations from, you know, year to year. Um, as cohorts move through, you can see that slight variation there. Um, this was a low growth year for them as well, um, but still performing higher than the state average, um, overall in all domains. And our, um, biology scores, again, um, the state trajectory declined while ours started to either hold steady or even show an upward trend. So overall a decent performance with some variations by cohort each year. But our, um, you know, we shifted our, uh, biology assessment to our freshmen, um, where students were often taking different forms and we have everybody taking biology now, different forms of that assessment. But, um, so we're excited to see the, um, you know, the overall solid performance with, um, 60% of our students meeting and exceeding, um, in biology. So our next steps, um, this past, on 10/29, um, we had our CIT day. And the, during that CIT day, um, each building did, um, an in-depth MCAS analysis, really with, um, building leaders guiding the, um, the process to make sure that people were really looking deep into, um, you know, both the current students in seat, how did they perform last year? And what can we do for them to, um, really give them targeted, um, you know, whether it's reinforcing skills in, for the whole class that everybody was weak on or, um, some really targeted focused areas for students that may need additional support in, um, in, um, that may need additional support in, um, in, um, you know, particular concepts. They looked at that, but they also looked at their overall multi-years worth of trends to look at their own teaching practices and look at curriculum and pacing and things like that. So really it had two parts to it, looking at, um, what they can do overall as an instructor, but then looking at student needs specifically. So they looked at, um, they used Open Architects in the platform to really drill down to the question level, as well as using the, um, online resources that we have, um, through the, um, school and district profiles on the website. But the, um, Open Architects allows them to, when you see these bars, like the, um, bar graphs and you see the, like, for example, you might see the, uh, uh, gray bar. Those are the students that are partially needing. And if you click on that bar, it's going to pull up those particular students that fell in that category, a link to their name, with their actual scores and answers, um, which standards they, which questions they missed, which standards they are, um, you know, struggling in. And the variation between their score compared to the district's score versus the state's score in that particular area. So it allows us the, very quickly, uh, for teachers to be able to click on the kids that they have access to in their caseload, how to, you know, which ones just missed the benchmark? How can I support those kids? Which, which ones were well below? What are we missing there? How can we support them? Which kids were proficient and just missed exceeding by a little bit? And it really allows us to, uh, drill deep into who those kids are without having to go through spreadsheet after spreadsheet. So that's, um, really been instrumental in helping us to make this whole MCAS analysis thing really meaningful and actionable for, um, for our teachers to be able to know the kids in front of them and what they need. So that's been great. The, um, you know, we looked at both achievement levels and growth percentiles. And, you know, I think that we're really seeing a lot of emphasis, you saw that from the principals this evening, about, um, focusing on growth so that it's not just, okay, they met a benchmark, we're done. It's really about everybody, um, making as much growth as they possibly can. And then, you know, they recommended, um, we, we've have, each of the different teaching teams or groups made recommendations for improvement and then developed some action plans about how they were going to, um, address those. We looked at, um, using MCAS data to identify intervention groups that we're forming, um, as part of our information for win groups, as well as, um, at the high school, I had mentioned that we will be looking at, um, freshman flex blocks and using this information to determine and make recommendations of which students should be in which, um, intervention flex block to focus on some of those targeted skills. So we're working on developing that plan, um, based on this data as well now. Uh, and I did want to mention, we had a lot of areas of, I would say, um, great success, a lot of areas of, oh, I thought we were going to do better. But I really do feel like we need to remember that we should stay the course. We certainly want to, um, use this informa- information, of course, to identify where we can improve and continue to focus. But, um, we've made a lot of signif- significant efforts over the last several years, um, to really improve core instruction, really elevate rigor, identify students in need of intervention and improve our tier two and three instruction, as well as enhance the core. So we do need to stay the course, learn from these results, um, and continuously refine our efforts moving forward. So. Um, I'm happy to, um, take any questions the committee might have.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott. Questions? Turner? You had your turn. You can go. Let somebody else go first.
Got a list over there.
It's got all kinds of notes. I think there's a lot going on over there.
That's why I'm giving, that's why I'm giving this side of the room a chance.
I have a couple of questions. I'm only going to talk specifically about writing because it's something I, I do a lot of. And so two questions, well, a couple of questions, but the one I'm going to really think about is, when I'm working with schools, we do, we actually, we do a lot of looking at the MCAS prompts and then saying, how is our curriculum supporting that? Is it supporting that? And I'll, I just pulled one up. Here's the one where a lot of schools that I tend to work in, this is where, this is a little bit of their struggle. Based on the passage, write a story that tells what will most likely happen next to the pink bunny slipper, the story. And the leather glove that were dropped into the basket. Use what you know about the characters, settings and events from the passage to write your story. They need to, it's idea generation, so there, it's not necessarily a response to text. They have to actually understand how to write a narrative. We're not seeing a lot of that in schools, right? And someone who does this work in, in the, at the higher ed, we teach writing, we have a full-on writing class, which is not actually typical of ed prep programs, where it's mostly a reading course. And then you have like two weeks of teaching writing. So it's like all the domains and then, oh, and don't forget to teach writing. So we know a lot of teachers actually aren't coming into schools having done a robust course in how to teach writing. And how to teach writing is really, really difficult, right? And so what I like about the program we have is there is a writing workshop component to it that is pretty robust. And I think like, once we kind of get into that and it, but how to parrot is very tricky because you've got to do the, you gotta do the literature. You gotta do all those pieces. And then how to fit this piece in is sort of like, oh, but this is the piece? That this is why we're seeing across the state and many states, it is not just Massachusetts, this is why, because this is the part we don't always do, right? We don't spend a lot of time teaching kids how to generate ideas, how to develop characters, how to develop a setting. I mean, we don't, and then they keep going. And then they're like, wait, what? I only thought I had to tell about so-and-so. I thought I could go into the text and pull. But that's not only what they're being asked to do. And so I guess my, so one, my question is, is are we looking at these prompts and comparing it? And are teachers using this to help them understand, like, this is what they're going to have to do? Am I preparing them to do that? I think that can be really productive. And also to just say, this is really tough work. And in a literacy block, you only have so much time. So how you fit in the writing needs to be super intentional. And we need to, like, as a district, say, this is important and we're going to give you the time to do that. And that's, that's a shift, I think, for a lot of schools from what I'm seeing, so.
So we, um, yes, we have printed everything this year for teachers to really look at all of the, everything we could download and print, the student samples, um, the student responses. And, um, yes, we've gone through, like, any release questions and looked at all of those. We, we, I will say that we have carved out, um, the time has been dedicated in our curriculum. So we, every, um, elementary classroom has dedicated writing workshop time. They have dedicated reading time, dedicated, um, phonics instruction time based on the program. So we have quite a bit of literacy time built into our schedule. I feel like, um, as like, uh, Kate mentioned earlier, Ms. Bissell, that the, um, focus this year was understanding the big part of the program, right? So, um, they're getting through the basics of the writing this year and the basics of everything else. And I do think we need to go deeper into the writing of, uh, like that writing workshop piece next year. We've been doing writing workshop though for years here, so we need to really tighten up what we're actually doing in writer's workshop, which I think is, um, part of, it, that needs to be a, a really focused, um, some focused work we need to do, um, because the, I will say, one of the concerns we did have at the lower level of this program for writing in kindergarten is that, um, we feel like there are some steps missing developmentally for, um, that, that our, our students need to be able to access. It sort of jumps some major preliminary foundational skills that they need in writing to be able to launch into the workshop. So we've done some work already at the kindergarten level to really, um, build out some preliminary skills for our students so that we can access that. So that's been shared and they're working on that now. So we hope to see that coming up as we go. And that will be an area of our focus going forward as far as the, you know, we are certainly working on narrative pieces. We're working on, uh, you know, all of the different domains and writing through that workshop model. But it is time-consuming, as you know, to bring a piece from draft to final. And, um, so the amount of practice they're getting in writing complete pieces, it's difficult to get through with everything that is on the plate, right, for all of the different subject areas. So, you know, that piece is definitely one we need to work on. It's a little bit of a struggle because we know that as the kids get up in the higher grades, what we really see the struggle with them is having multiple pieces of text that they need to read, analyze, compare, write in response to all of those. And that's where we see the kids struggle when they get higher. And that's really an important skill that they need to access and learn content and understand material. And they're not going to necessarily be writing, net, finishing narrative stories on a regular basis as they get older. So it's that finding that, find, i- it's important that they understand it and learn it, but it's that fine line of where are we emphasizing and where are we spending as much, you know, the amount of time that we have and how do we focus that time? So, um, so definitely on the same page with you around really building that out more solidly. And I think that that's kind of next phase of our implementation with the program.
Such a tricky thing. I mean, the engagement and motivation is so very important to writing. And they're motivated and engaged when it's something they want to write about. And so if we're only giving them pieces where they have to always respond to text, they're losing the motivation to write. And now with AI, that's, uh, they have to see writing as an art form.
Yeah.
Like, it's a way to, it's really a way to, like, tell what's happening inside my head that no one else can know. But if we're not providing space for that-
Yeah.
And they're frustrated, going to AI is much more likely because, well, AI can do it better than I can do it. So it's, we're in a really interesting space with writing right now. So I think that-
Yeah.
Really like digging into this and like any curriculum, some of it's really explicit and some of it isn't as explicit. Like that modeling of like, how did I go in and revise it? How did I do thi- like, really having teachers like feel comfortable with that, I think is kind of our next big step. But I'm excited about where we're headed. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I, can I jump you really quickly just for, just a technical question? Super technical? It's, what, what age did they start learning the writing stuff? I'm sorry, Stephen.
Oh, kindergarten. I mean, they learn preliminary skills, uh, letter, under, you know, recognizing letters and sounds and things like that in preschool. But in kindergarten, more formally, they start that whole process of putting the, uh, letters into words and building the sentences and building it out. You've got a few years left.
It's coming.
Mr. Turner and then Mr. Exel.
Thank you very much for all the, all the information and, and context. One of the things I struggle with this form of the presentation is the, just the simple amalgamation of the data by grade, where we don't have the view into higher needs or at risk or by gender or by race. Um, and it, and we can really lose track of where we might be, you know, having good successes or losing ground, with groups that have, just more broadly at risk. So do you have ways to do the segmented views when you're reviewing it with the building leaders and with the teams? To make sure, um, it, it's a concern, especially when you see the data in this way where it's just, it's so high level.
And I, and I should have pointed out, as, when we did the MCAS analysis, they also are asked to identify any subgroup that is not performing well, or there's a significant gap between the students overall and that subgroup, and identify who those subgroups are and, um, what, how their performance is. And, um, and then what are some suggestions of how we attack, you know, um, move forward to help move them forward even more? And we are, you know, s- still seeing, um, the same subgroup. And I can certainly share that data with you as well, if you'd like following. But, um, and, you know, we're seeing similar trends with our, um, subgroups. Special education, our English learners, um, and basically our high need students overall. However, there are areas where we saw really good growth, um, in those, um, subgroups. And, um, and then we saw all our, their growth might have been higher, but then our, um, all students overall, their growth wasn't as strong. So, so some of those efforts are definitely helping, but we do still see a significant gap between the performance of, um, all students versus some subgroups.
Yeah, and if memory serves with, with, on gender, for example, there were places where, um, for example, earlier on, ELA, the female students had higher scores than the males. And in, in math, I think there was a point in time when it actually flipped. And so part of what you get to there is, are there things we're doing simply with the, the, the form of instruction that, that are creating some of those gaps that we couldn't find ways to address? Ideally with smaller changes that could, could really help everyone kind of regardless, um, reach, reach more of their potential, so.
One other feature that this platform has is it has key insights where it gives you a suggestion of a bank of, um, many, many different questions you can ask, such as which subgroup of students made the highest growth and at what grade? And you click on it and it pulls that data up instantly for you. And, or which students, um, you know, had the, um, lowest growth, um, in whatever, and it'll pull that out. So it's really, makes it quick for us to go in and figure out, and again, then it brings up those kids' names, their profiles. Have they received interventions? Are they on an IEP? Are they on a five, do they have a 504 plan? And it gives us all that information in one fell swoop, which is nice. But, so we certainly are, even though it may not all be in this presentation this evening, we are definitely using the data more than we ever have.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Turner. Mr. Exel.
Just as a note to Mr. Turner's point, that that data is all on the DESI Profiles, uh, website. So if you look on the, in the assessment tab on the Wilmington page, um, there's a specific report for MCAS results by student group.
Okay.
And breaks it, breaks it down into students with disabilities, ELs and every racial category, high needs, low income and everything. So that's, uh, that is all publicly out there. I want to follow on Dr. Bryson's comment about that particular, uh, writing task, um, the narrative writing task. And I can just say that districts across the Commonwealth really struggle with that specific writing task. Student, students really have a hard time with it because that, the nature of what you said where it's, you know, here's a story that you read. You know, continue the story. What do you think so-and-so will do next? And yet you still have to base it on the passage. So it's part of the difficulty is that you have to use the characterization that was already given to you. And yet you still have to kind of invent essentially and creatively come up with what happens next. And you find tons of students who either just kind of, just go off making up their own story that has no real connection, other than the name of the character that they use from the previous story. Or you get a lot of students who describe what they think is going to happen next, but don't put it in a narrative form, so it's not actually a story. And that leads to also, um, low scores on those writing prompts. So that's something that we've heard from the, heard from the field a lot, that, uh, that many, many schools, uh, struggle with those, with that. Because it's, it's in the standards, but it's, you know, it's one of the several writing modes, uh, that can be tested. And that's the one that schools struggle with the most, that particular writing task. Generally, um, we talked about grade ten a little bit. And one thing that, that, that you didn't say, because maybe it would sound like you were making an excuse or something, but, uh, but I can definitely say is that there seems to be no doubt that the passage of question two last year affected grade ten results. When it's not a graduation requirement, people are not going to spend as much time writing their essays. There, I mean, it's like, it's not as important. Uh, it's not a high stakes test anymore. You don't need to pass to graduate. And so it is not surprising that, uh, that results went down. And this was a statewide, statewide phenomenon. There were more, uh, blank responses this year than in twenty twenty-four. There were triple as many off-topic essays where people just don't even respond to the essay prompt, but just kind of, you know, write on some, whatever topic, uh, they, uh, they like, or, you know, or, you know, say choice, choice words to the people who create MCAS and-
Creative writing.
Yeah, creative writing. So there's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of evidence that, um, students were not, and that, and that's just the measurable things. You could all, also just, I think, common sense, understand that, you know, if it doesn't, if it's, if you don't need it to graduate, if you need to graduate, you're going to like really write your essay really well and you're going to be thorough and you're going to keep working on that. And if not, then you're going to probably just like, yeah, that's good enough. So that's, that's definitely part of what, what we saw statewide. And it is, uh, it is not just a Wilmington issue. Those, that twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one part of the graph, that is just twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
So we're not looking at pre-pandem- pre-pandemic, uh, numbers there. And, uh, it's, it has been relatively steady, sort of from mid-pandemic to post-pandemic. But we are still far below, uh, where we, where we were before. In twenty nineteen, fifty-seven percent grade six ELA was meeting and exceeding. And the, last year we were forty-five percent, sorry, forty-three percent, so fourteen point drop. We were seventy percent proficient here, meeting and exceeding, uh, for grade six math in twenty nineteen, and now we're forty-nine percent. And you can, if you go back and look at the twenty nineteen numbers, there are multiple grades and subjects in which we are above seventy percent, meeting and exceeding, seventy-seven percent high school ELA. Anyway, and we're not anywhere near, not anywhere near that in, uh, in any of our categories now. This again, largely a statewide- This again, largely a statewide phenomenon as well. There were only 13 districts this year, uh, in grades three through eight who have returned to their pre-pandemic performance, um, in, in both ELA and math. There are, there are a bunch that have done it in one subject, but only 13 districts statewide have gotten back to where they were, uh, in both ELA and math. So this is, this is a statewide struggle. But, um, we are, we are still far behind where we were in 2019. And so we shouldn't, uh, we shouldn't not, not acknowledge that and recognize, recognize the challenge.
Anything else, Mr. Exel?
Do you want, do you want more?
No, no. You know, if you were collecting your thoughts, I didn't want to answer.
No.
Dr. McCauley.
Sure, uh, comment and then a question, because my comment was a question I was answering in the presentation. So thank you. Uh, and thanks you for the detailed update and everything like that. Uh, so my first comment and similar, following the same lines as what Doc, um, Mr. Ragsdale said, was we are definitely now, we're, we've been consistently below. It's very understood COVID had a huge impact and the shutdowns and everything like that. Uh, the third graders is something I would really like to keep an eye on going forward. And you had an answer for new curriculum, that's why they're still low. But that class, they may have missed some preschool, but not any like K through five education, right? So I think seeing them, how they progress, and then this year's third grade class that they do next year, I think will be really important.
Definitely. It's interesting because you're right, they haven't necessarily missed formal schooling.
Yeah.
But they are, um, it's, it's an, um, you know, we're seeing kids, um, coming in still who need a lot more time to develop their social skills and their ability to attend to school and be focused. And so, um, and I do believe that, you know, through those really young years when they were toddlers and weren't necessarily in the playgroups and the, and going to the, you know, parent and child, mommy and me or whatever groups and things like that, um, for different classes and things that, um, that has an impact. Um, and I also do believe that, I will say that, um, I do believe that there were more children that didn't have formal preschool experience, partly because post pandemic, parents were hybrid and many of them were able to be home with their children. Um, and, oh, you know, and, and maybe chose not to, um, put their student, their children in a, in a, um, private or public preschool. So we, but we are seeing now kids coming in this year in kindergarten. I want to say this is the first year we're seeing almost all of our students had a preschool experience. But that hasn't been the same for the last few years. So I do wonder if there's some of that still that we're seeing trickling, but.
Yeah, I mean preschool's really important. That's what all the research says, and that can be a good theory as well, too. Uh, and then my question would be also like what Mr. Ragsdale said. So agree, very rigorous curriculum in place, making a lot of great changes, definitely stay the course. Uh, and don't need an answer right now, but you know, ma- maybe we also want to look at some of those districts that are performing better or the ones that got up to the pre-pandemic levels. Like what are they doing and then how, how are our plans comparing to what they're doing, you know?
Yeah, we certainly have, are doing a lot of that, you know, we, especially in our own middle sex league area, our neighboring communities, looking at our, you know, how are we doing in comparison and what are people doing? Um, and, you know, there are definitely some anomalies here and there that I've been studying for years, trying to figure out. Um, but, um, I agree with the, um, suggestion to look at, um, the schools that have reached that.
Yeah.
Um, and look at some of those commonalities amongst those schools. So definitely work to do there.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McCauley. Mr. Golden.
Thank you. Um, so many questions. But I can't articulate them properly slash, I don't know if this is the right forum. But one that I know I have is, um, the science scores, obviously we're on the uptick. And I now, now since Mr. Ragsale clarified that this is data that already is post pandemic. So it's not necessarily the case that wow, like even through that duress, like the science scores, but they still are.
Growing.
Growing in such a different way, these scores that are decreasing in other categories. So is it just that science is easier to teach? That seems wrong.
It's actually not.
Right. So like what, what in your words or thoughts explains that discrepancy? Because the teachers are all really talented and capable in our district across categories.
Um, so yes, they, they certainly are. And honestly, I think science is harder to teach in the sense that it requires, especially at the elementary grade level, because it requires so much setup and, and materials and all of that. Um, it is hands-on and engaging. Um, so we know that many kids learn best in that, through that modality. Um, we have incorporated a lot of, um, focus on STEM at the elementary grade levels over the last few years, too, with our STEM challenges that we do all the time, um, or, you know, several times a year in all the grade levels. Um, we have in the, um, as part of their library experience, we have digital learning specialists. We'll, we'll, um, kind of co-teach in library and do some, um, STEM-related activities here and there as well. And that's been, um, added into the curriculum. Um, and again, the, and the other piece is we have found some pretty good resources to, to use alongside our curriculum that, um, allow for, even when we don't have time to pull out all the manipulatives and all the materials for the experiment, there are virtual experiments that we can, um, access online and, and kids can actually manipulate things and, and see the results, you know, so it's not the same experience. But when you only have 20 minutes and you're not going to have time to do the whole thing, rather than saying, never mind, we don't have time, you can pull that out and, um, give kids that same experience. Um, through, we use a program called Generation Genius as well, that has a lot of really good aligned videos with our science curriculum. So I think we've done a lot of things in that area that help. Um, and then just thinking about like when we look at the, um, middle school and high school, the robotics and all of the different things that we've been doing, um, CAD programs, all of that. And, um, and, you know, watching the kids perform and, and then they're mentoring younger kids to come up and engage in those different programs. Um, we've had really positive, um, a lot of kids participating and positive results. So, um, teachers are working really hard and, and, and kids are enjoying it. So, um, I'm, you know, it's hard, you, you want to find what works and bottle it. And it's so tricky because I could say this right now and next year we could see a dip, right? So I never, um, want to, uh, over emphasize any one particular year or one particular, you know, area for success because it's so hard to know, um, as we move forward. But we're going to keep doing what we're doing and just keep fingers crossed that we're going in the right direction in that area. So.
Mr. Ragsdale.
Uh, I'll just quickly tack on that science is one place where we're pretty much either on par or actually above where we were in 2019. Um, so we were, the grade, grade five was 50% proficient, uh, meeting exceeding in 2019, 58% this year. Uh, grade eight was down a little bit, 56% to 53% from 2019 to 2025. But that's, that is a bright spot.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great presentation, great questions. I appreciate all the work that I know goes into getting ready for that. Um, in the interest of time, again, if there's no objection from the committee, I'd like to take the rest of the agenda just a little bit out of order. Uh, and take the first item of old business first, so we can let Alicia go home. Hearing no objection, we'll go, uh, old business, item A, permanent superintendent search update. Alicia from MASC is here, joining us this evening, waiting patiently. Thank you.
No worries. Our conference is next week, so I was punching up slides and making lists for myself.
You're not busy at all.
I am not busy at all, and it's lovely to be back here. So let me first say, um, for those of you who haven't met me, Alicia Mall, and I work for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. I am the field director for the Northeast. Um, I am also currently a school committee member myself. Almost all of our staff has been or currently is a school committee member. Um, and I have been working with your wonderful staff and some school committee members here to put together the screening committee and to run the screening committee process. And tonight we bring you a slate of three names for finalists, for interviews, for the permanent superintendent position. So backing up, um, when your opening was posted, you received 17 applications and your opening was posted for four weeks. Um, once the screening committee met, and the screening committee met on October 20th, we formulated questions in public session and then we entered executive session, as is dictated by Mass General law. Um, the screening committee voted to move seven final, seven semifinalists forward for interviews. The screening committee then reconvened and they interviewed all seven of those finalists. Um, throughout the process, there was a lot of discussion about the applications themselves, the applicants. Um, we did a few sort of straw pulls to get a feel for what people were looking for. Um, and also when we developed the questions, um, prior to that, we looked a lot at what the district is currently doing, what the needs of the district are, some of the feedback from, um, previous input. Um, and came up with sort of a, a set of questions, which I will share with the school committee after this process so that you can use it in the next steps as well. So, um, after meeting on October 22nd, 23rd, and 29th, and we all ran multi-day marathons. Thank you again for all of your cooperation. Um, we bring to you tonight a slate as follows. Your first candidate for superintendent is Dr. Patricia Hayes, Haynes. Um, she is currently the assistant superintendent in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. She holds a BS and an MS from Central Connecticut State University. An administrative certificate, apparently I am tired of than I thought. Let's try that again. An administrative certification from Sacred Heart University in Connecticut, a superintendent certification from Northwest Nazarene University in Idaho, and a PhD in education from Capella University in Minnesota. Your second candidate is Dr. Brandy Quong, who is currently the superintendent in Methuen, Massachusetts. She holds a, both a BA and an MA from Boston College in Massachusetts, and a doctorate of education from UMass Lowell in Massachusetts. And your last candidate is Dr. Ma, sorry, is Mr. Matthew Poska, who is currently the assistant superintendent for secondary education in Nashua, New Hampshire. He holds a BA from Merrimack College in Massachusetts and an MA from Salem State University. Um, it, important to note that even though we have, um, just heard that a couple of these candidates currently do not work in Massachusetts, all three of them do hold certification already in the state of Massachusetts for superintendency. So that will not be a concern moving forward. Um, and then upon approval of the slate, we have started speaking with the, um, candidates to slot them into your preferred interview days. Um, we have determined as a group, um, that Monday, November 17th and Wednesday, November 19th will be the days that are in district visits with an interview with the school committee. And, um, right now it sounds like, and I don't think we've nailed this down yet, but it sounds like the 17th will have one person and the 19th will have two, which actually, speaking to the candidates, that actually works out very well for them. Important to note, too, when we do our in-district visit days, that one of the next things that we're going to be communicating about, and we've actually already started, is what stakeholder groups you'd like to have meet with the candidates and the process for feedback. Um, we will do an online survey that will be available to everyone in those stakeholder groups that they can share with me. And then we will also do a survey after the public interviews so that the school committee can get feedback. The current plan is for the school committee to vote on November 25th. So there will be time for people to have that feedback and for the school committee to digest it. So I just threw a ton of information at you. Are there any questions?
Thank you. I will start by thanking you for your time, your leadership, and those from the committee who helped out. I know that the process is more or less executive session, and so there's not a ton that you guys can tell us. But if there are questions that those who weren't involved have, or if you would like to add anything, but. Questions, comments, thoughts?
So I will share that after lengthy discussion on the seven semifinalists, the slate in front of you was unanimous. It was a unanimous vote from all 15 screening committee members to move these three people forward to you.
Thank you. Mr. Golden.
Hi, thank you, Alicia. Um, my question, if I'm allowed to ask it, is, um, when will we be receiving kind of further reading material about these candidates?
Yes, so I did already provide the redacted resumes. Um, once the slate is accepted, then my office will work to redact the other information for you. You will also get copies of the questions that the screening committee asked. You'll also get, I think I might have already sent it, but I'll send it again, our compendium of questions that we collect over years. Um, so as soon as the slate is approved, because this is the first time the public is hearing, everything has been embargoed until now. Um, as soon as the slate is, is approved, that's when you will get the next round. There will also be a couple other additional questions to answer as we go through. Um, and that's something you should decide tonight. I have been working with Jen, um, and with Andrea, who has been fantastic, and with Tracy in central office. Thank you all for all of that. Um, also, you guys, um, you didn't tell me that you were going to have a cooking class here on every Wednesday night. I might have to keep coming back for that. Um, that was kind of amazing. So one, one of the things you'll need to decide tonight is, would you like me to keep working with Jen, who I've been working with, um, during this time, to continue to set up the meetings, um, Jen and Andrea and Tracy? And then we'll also talk about, um, reference checks and how you want to do them and who's going to do them. Some committees like to do them themselves, some committees like us to do them. Either way is fine. We are your association. We will do what you want us to do. So.
Mr. Turner? No? Okay, with that, then I would look for a motion. Does anybody want to make?
Permanent motion, I remember.
Yeah. I move to accept the permanent superintendent search candidate. It's late.
Motion made, motion seconded, further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Who was my second?
Uh, Mr. Exel. Sorry, thank you.
Excellent.
Yes, you can.
Um, Alicia, so now when we start to think about questions, do you want us to send those to you?
So you don't have to. When the school committee develops their questions, and again, I'll send you what the screening committee used so you can kind of start to refine your questions. Generally what we do is, um, if you want to develop questions together, we have to post a meeting. It has to be done in open session. That's a little weird when you're about to have the interviews, too. So generally what we advise people to do is your interview that night is usually 75 minutes with the finalists. You would think about ranking a set of questions that you have decided are on topics that are important to you. We would ask that you do at least three. That way, if someone else asks your question, you could, you have backups. Um, the idea, however, is that every candidate gets the same interview, so we want to try and keep it very uniform. Generally what happens is the school committee members will develop their questions. If you have concerns about them, you can definitely reach out to me, but you don't have to. That can be a process you develop on your own.
Um, so I'll, I'll put this out to the committee. So in the past, we have sort of submitted them and then one person.
Yeah.
Organizes it, so we all have the same template and we can make sure that there are no repeats. So it looks like it flows. So that would sort of be my preference and I'm happy to do that. But I wanted to just check, as opposed to just coming with our own questions, which then may be quite repetitive. So I just think it might be a little easier to do it that way, but I'm curious to hear from others.
100%. I, 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 I think, and particularly being the writing expert, as we learned from the earlier session. I think you'd be the perfect person to amalgamate the questions.
That's all David.
And that is something I very often do with whoever I've been working with through the process. So we can definitely, we're, we work well together.
So they can send those questions to us.
Yes.
And then we can.
Yep.
Basically make a final document and then we can send that to them.
Yes, you just can't discuss it.
We just can't discuss it.
But if you have a question.
But if you get that document and you're like, oh, I don't like this, I can actually go back, not, not a reply all, but you can just write to me and say, mm, can we actually shift this around? Or David might wordsmith a few things, he's very good at that. And then I can then wordsmith it and then send it back out, as long as we're not deliberating.
Correct.
Within that email chain. So does that sound good to everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then we'll do it that way. That's okay.
Point of clarification, when would you like the first set of questions to you? Just make sure the process flows and you're not doing everything late at night.
As soon as possible. So I would say, I mean, get this, get, you know, get through those resumes, take a look at all the documents. And then I would say over the weekend, by early next week, send me your three questions. And then I will have that to you mid-week to just take a look at. And then by the end of the week, we'll have our finals that we're ready to, Friday, I want everything ready to go for the following Monday.
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just an FYI, we do have our conference next week. Um, you, if you email me directly, you might get an out of office menu, uh, message. I'm not ignoring you. I know your search is like moving through. So you will get me, but just so that no one panics and they see, if they see an out of office message, I'm watching for your emails. So in between my six workshops.
Workshops, yeah. Anything else?
Anything else?
We mentioned, uh, reference checks. Do we want to figure that out now or do you want to do questions first and then go from there?
Let's do questions first and then go from there. I mean, I think the way we've done it in the past is we, we all kind of divvied it up.
Yeah.
Um, so feel free to think on that and then. So feel free to think on that, and then just email me directly and let me know what you're thinking. If you're like, "It was great and I want to keep doing it, I want to do all of it," no. I mean, just if there's a particular subgroup that you have already talked, that you feel comfortable calling that particular subgroup, just let me know. And if there are pieces we can't fill in, then I think MASC can certainly help us with that. It's a lot, it is a lot of work, those of us who have done that. It is a ton of work, so I think it's fine to sort of do as much as we can, and then have MASC help us out, I think seems appropriate.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Hearing nothing else?
Fantastic. Thank you all.
Good luck with the conference next week.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
On the Cape in November. It's really lovely.
We'll see you there.
See you there.
Couple of us will see you there.
You know, I've only been to one. I went last year and it was unseasonably warm on the Cape last November, so just, you know, you may luck out again this year.
Inside baseball, it's the last year on the Cape.
Oh.
What's going off the Cape? I don't know exactly where yet, but we are coming off the Cape.
No.
Wow. Breaking news.
I know.
Is that supposed to be...
Scandalous.
All right.
Scandalous.
Heard it here first.
School committee breaks news.
Um, just, just one very quick point of clarification, just for the committee folks, we are, I assume, comfortable with Jen sort of continuing to lead spearhead working with Alicia. Great.
I'll make the motion and second that one.
Okay.
The question is, is she still willing to do it?
Yeah.
Or she wants some helper to pass it off?
I will see, I will see this through.
She will see this through. All right. Thank you, Alicia.
Alicia, thank you so much.
All right, I'm going to spin us back around to new business. First read policies. Policy Subcommittee has submitted four policies to us. Policy Subcommittee friends, who wants to talk us through these?
I was drawing.
And the room turns to Mr. Aggsdale.
Dave, Dave, David and Dr. Thompson really led this, so I'm going to say that can, it can move to that side of this.
All right.
Well, I, I will tee this up for Christine.
Oh, thanks. The buck is passing, passing it on furthermore.
But the, so if we look at the first one, which I think is IKF, which is the graduation requirements, this is essentially updating our graduation requirements because of the new schedule and new number of courses that people take, and therefore new number of credit hours. And so that is, that is the basic purpose for the revision of the graduation requirements.
Yes, that and it, we recognize it hadn't been updated in many, many, many years. So it wasn't even reflecting our past schedule. So, yeah, so I, as we met, when I met with the committee, this work was done with Mr. Gendron and his team to really make sure, from the guidance department as well, to make sure that the new language reflects the existing practices in the handbook and the schedule, and it was important that this be updated for those reasons alone, but also for, and you'll see in reference to the competency determination, it's a requirement that, you know, we have this really solidified as well. So obviously the strike-throughs are being removed, and the additional text and read are new additions, so I'm happy to take any questions if people have them.
Ms. Elliott, questions? Okay, hearing none.
And, and just as a reminder, these policies are here for a first read.
Right.
So we're not taking any action on them tonight, except essentially seeing if we're ready to move them to the next, to another meeting for approval, or if they need some revision in between. But, they're for a first read.
Well, hearing no thoughts, it seems safe to move these to a second read. Or this one, I should say.
Okay. The next one is IKFA, which is the competency determination, and we first created this last year, so this is, all, districts had to create a competency determination policy in the wake of the removal of MCAS as a graduation requirement after the ballot question last year, because while MCAS was removed as a graduation requirement, the competency determination was still part of the law. And so it used to be that students received the competency determination, got the CD by passing MCAS, and now it's by passing coursework and demonstrating mastery. So we did a preliminary policy last year based on the best information that we, that we had, and Desi gave out additional guidance over the summer, as well as some model language from MASC, which has been incorporated into the new policy. MASC has also in their online reference policy manual named this policy IKFE, and I would recommend that we also adopt that convention as well, so that when we approve the policy, we also rename it IKFE.
Dash E?
Yes, dash E.
I don't think it's dash. I thought it was, I think it's, I'll have to check it again.
It is IKF dash A, as it's currently listed.
I think it's just IKFE, just four letters together. I'll, I'll check the reference manual.
Just let me know?
Yeah, I'll let you know if I'm misremembering that.
Thank you. Questions, thoughts, comments on what is currently IKF dash A? Mr. Turner? I asked this question, and I already did get a bit of a response, but the, the science piece, it's the only place where we list a course we don't currently offer, so it seems odd to list the course we don't offer as a potential way to accomplish the competency determination, and specifically the technology slash engineering year-long class. Is there, are there other, is there a reason why in that one place we've added a class? I don't know, I didn't remember hearing that we were anticipating one, we didn't...
The reason that that's there is that the, the ballot question, whether the language that was changed in the law said that you earn the competency determination by passing any course equivalent to what was offered on the MCAS in 2023. And in 2023, these were the four science tests that were still offered on the MCAS. And so that's why.
And using the language, I mean, that's the recommended language, but it also gives us a little more, you know, if we do develop, you know, we do have courses in those areas, and if we, you know, that does, can count if need be.
It's built-in flexibility, kind of, yeah, okay. Does that answer your question, Mr. Turner? Yes, it does. And then one other piece, I'm surprised, I guess, that the recommended language does include a reference to, all else fails, you can still use the MCAS?
That's also from Desi, and that, basically the idea there is, there may be some circumstances in which, the example that, that was, that was given when they presented this to the, to the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, was that you have a student, for example, who comes in from another country, who can't provide the documentation of the, of the course that they took, but they've taken the class already, and so offering them an opportunity to pass MCAS in order to get their CD, rather than forcing them to sit through a course that they've already taken. Probably, probably not something that would, but it's essentially was just that last bit of flexibility, so that if someone couldn't prove that they've passed this class, but they've taken it, we don't want to force them to just put their butt in the seat for...
And that seems fair, I just, I was surprised to see it, I guess, the, the way this is all gone.
That's what, that's why that was included.
Thank you very much. Hearing no changes. We'll move that to a second read and move on to policy JH, student absences and excuses.
All right. Christine, you're close to this, so. Well, this one is actually, Christine Murray has been doing a lot of work with this, but this was, as you can see, there's lots of legalese comments in here from the lawyer. So this has been reviewed, and this was the work that was done last year related to the committee that Christine presented, I think, recently to you, the work around the attendance piece, and, and with their, all of this work, they compiled, they shared their feedback with our, our legal counsel, and he has helped by adding additional language and redlining as well. So I can try to answer any questions you might have, or definitely pass them on and respond back with, pass them under Christine and get back to you.
And Christine conveyed to us that the, I think the most, the most important work and what they spent the most time figuring out was really defining excused absences versus unexcused absences, and kind of working through the, the policies of those. And, you know, when, what kind of, interventions maybe sounds a little strong, but what kind of action will be taken based on each of those different types of absences?
Right.
Thank you for that. Questions, comments, thoughts? Hearing none. We can move that to a second read and move on to blank policy, middle school pathway, middle school pathway exploration policy, excuse me.
Yeah, so strangely, this has not been given a number, like a, a letter designation yet, but the, this is a policy that Desi is requiring all schools to have in place. They actually had a November 1st deadline, which we got an extension.
We did. Confirmed.
So we, we got an extension. As many districts...
Right, they got it on the 30th or something like that.
As, as many, many districts needed that extension. And this essentially is, there needs to be a formal policy in place for districts that belong to a regional vocational technical district, to provide their eighth grade students with information about the options available to them. So for us practically speaking, this just kind of codifies that there needs to be a policy of making sure that students know about what's available to them at Shawshank Tech, and have opportunities to explore those options, to visit the tech during the school day, which I think was the only thing that we weren't already doing, because obviously for a long time, we've been giving lots of opportunities for students to, to learn the opportunities at the tech, and I think that was the only...
It was after school.
The only thing that we weren't currently doing was creating potential opportunities for them to visit like during the school day, which needs to, needs to be at least available. So, so Brian, Brian Kyra and his team worked on this policy, working again from model language from Desi.
Excellent. Questions, thoughts, comments, Mr. Turner? Two things. One, it's, it's oddly specific, for a policy, it's oddly specific in spots. By this date, we'll do that, as opposed to most of our policies are more policy as opposed to procedure. So it's, it's oddly specific, and I also, I, I do understand that, that the Desi guidance is, you need to make sure you're properly informing kids about the opportunities at the technical school. It feels really odd to have a policy that goes through so much detail of how we introduce the technical school, when a, a fair part of our current effort has been also to make sure the students are properly informed of the opportunities at our high school, and all the work we do in that sort of piece, and it just, it, it feels odd. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it this way, and I'm not, it's not the prescribed way, but it does feel really odd to go through the length we describe how we provide this information, and not describe how we provide the other information. And why we would be so prescriptive about one, and again, I know it goes towards the, the guidance from Desi, how we would be so prescriptive on one side, but not at all discussing the other, just seems odd. It may not be, it may be that this is what we just need to do, and I, and I, I wouldn't object so strongly just to say we shouldn't do what we, just the minimum of what we need to do, but it...
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's an interesting question about, like, we're basically required to have this policy in place, and again, have to submit it, essentially, you know, an approved policy to Desi. But I, it's interesting that I suppose we could additionally modify it to also state what we do, because there's obviously lots of stuff that goes on as far as like eighth grade coming over to the high school, and they get a presentation from Mr. Gendron, they visit the high school, and that, you know, we do a lot of that same stuff for WHS. We just don't have a policy about it. It's just what we do.
Again, this feels more like a procedure than a policy, at its very base. And so in some ways, it's, it's, you write the document to say, for both schools, we do all these things. And, you know, and, and it would be almost the way I would envision it, but, and, and again, with less dates and a little bit less precision. But if, I, I defer to the expertise in the room, yourself obviously, and then, and then the central office leadership team.
Policy dictates less flexibility than an internal procedure.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the concern, for sure.
I mean, I mean, the dates are in there because that's when the state is saying we have to do it by, so. Can't really take those out, but...
Okay. I, I think I've said more than enough. Other questions, comments, thoughts? Okay, hearing none. We'll move that to a second reading. David, I'll pose this question to you. Thoughts on, like a naming convention? Will we slot this in somewhere before second reading?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. But we're, we're just going to keep it, just put in the M somewhere, it's just middle school exploration policy.
The student section of the policy manual, I think it would be appropriate, correct?
Student section?
Hopefully, hopefully there'll be more guidance coming, but...
And if not, it can go with the...
Yeah, well...
Yeah, just amend it once a week. It's 172.
I'll grab some of the MASC folk next week at the conference, at the conference, and I'll buttonhole them and demand, demand...
Right, and they'll, and they'll point you over to the Desi folk.
Right.
Who then point you back to the MASC folk.
He knows where they are.
I know how to find those.
They just do regulations and say you need a policy, so. All right.
Just going to bounce it around back and forth.
Right, we'll just play, we'll just play volleyball up and over the net. Thank you to the Policy Subcommittee for getting through what I'm sure was quite a bit of work to get us to these, this point, four policies moving to the second reading for our next regular meeting. And that concludes new business, moving us on to...
Actually, if you don't mind...
I don't mind, go right ahead.
While we're on policies.
Sure.
So these are all policies that were, like, moved forward because we had to essentially, like, these were things that had changed, things that we needed to update and, you know, and actually submit. Going forward right now, obviously things can pop up at any time, but going forward right now, we're going to return to our regular review of just updating policies, in which we just revisit the policies that haven't been looked at for a long time, and make sure that we update them, that they match what we are actually doing, and usually bring them in line with MASC model policies unless there's a reason to, to go a different direction in that. But the next set of policies that you see will be more, be more of that kind.
Great. I know, having been on the Policy Subcommittee, there's a lot there, but it's, you know, it's good, it's important work, so look forward to, to bringing some of those back. And with that, we will conclude new business. Our last item of old business, just a very brief update on the YRBS survey. So as folks in the committee and in the community will remember, we sort of temporarily postponed the YRBS survey in the spring of this year, with the intent to give the Wellness Committee some additional time to sort of review, make some updated, updates or recommended changes. And so the Wellness, Wellness Committee, excuse me, has sort of completed that work, and will be moving forward with that survey with those four sexual behavior-related questions being removed for the students at the middle school level. The, I know one of the big questions was the opt-out, so again, the opt-out procedure will be clearly communicated with parents in advance, as has always been the case, and, you know, building leaders, teachers, folks will be sort of again, reminded that students can opt-out from the survey day of, either from the whole survey or from any part of the survey that they, that may make them feel uncomfortable or whatever. So the survey will be conducted sometime before the end of this year, the date will be communicated in advance. Again, that sort of opt-out information, all that stuff will come out well in advance of, of the survey being completed, but I just wanted to bring that to folks in advance. So, Mr. Turner? One quick point of clarification. Please. The, the logic of removing those four questions is because of some changes in the curriculum that are still being rolled out. The intention is fully to reinstate those questions in the coming years, but at this exact point in time, there's, there's still the continuing rollout of the curriculum at the middle school level, and wanted to make sure that all, all the students had benefited from that new curriculum before we posed those questions in the survey. So that was, it's, it's a temporary change. I was going to ask you for your thoughts, because I know you were part of that meeting, so thank you. Thank you. And yeah, then the last piece is, is just that the, the district and, and committee continue to think that the survey has a tremendous value to us and the community. There's insight we gain into our students and our young folks from that, that survey that's really helpful, and from the school side, helps to make sure that our students are socially and emotionally ready to learn when they're in the buildings. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. Okay, hearing none. That concludes old business. Brings us to Subcommittee Reports. Hearing none. Correspondence?
None this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. All right. Future school committee dates and other notable items. We learned this evening that the Wilmington High School football team will be playing their first playoff game here, correct?
Correct.
At home, at 7:00. Moving along, November 11th, Veterans Day, the Wilmington High School marching band will be performing in the Veterans Day ceremony on the Town Common at 11:00 AM. November 17th and 19th, we will meet in this room for superintendent candidate interviews starting at 5:30. November 18th, the Wildwood School Building Committee will be meeting here in this room at 6:30 PM. That'll be a long week for those of you who are on the Wilmington School Building Committee. November 25th, School Committee deliberations regarding superintendent candidates here in this room, beginning at 6:30. December 2nd, 2025, the Wilmington High School and Wilmington Middle School band performance takes place at the high school in the Joanne M. Benton Auditorium at 7:00 PM. And December 4th, the Wilmington Middle School chorus performance in the Wilmington Middle School Auditorium at 7:00 PM. Mr. Turner? Just a couple ones, thank you. Should just let you do this.
Delegate that to him.
Sometimes I don't find it mentally. Sorry. That's my bad. On the 26th of November, which is a Wednesday, we will have early release, which somehow got through the scheduling planning process last year, I suppose. So all, everyone will be able to benefit from, from that. And then on the 9th of December, so just after this, this list, the high school and middle school strings, the 7th through 12 grades, will have their performance here at 7:00 in the Joanne Benton Auditorium. And on the 11th, the 5th and 6th, so a combination of middle, middle school and intermediate will, strings groups will be performing at the middle school at 7:00. So strings is coming as well. Excellent. Thank you very much, Dr. Bryson.
Just a note that the 25th is a Tuesday, so just don't assume it's on Wednesday.
Correct. Thank you. Hearing nothing else. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Dr. Bryson, seconded by Mr. Golden. All those in favor? Unanimous. Good night. Thank you.
Good night.